Reconvene the May twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one regularly scheduled board meeting where we just came from executive session. If I can please have a motion for the end of executive session.
Mister Chair.
Miss Mackey.
Please allow the record to reflect that we concluded executive session at five fifty seven P M.
Motion made by Miss Mackey, do I have a second? Seconded by Doctor Caution Parker, is there any discussion? Uh, with no discussion, is everybody ready for a computer vote or we need the hand vote? Alright, computer vote. While I'm waiting for that, Doctor Holmes sends her regards, she had a matter, a personal matter that she had to attend to this evening and can't be with us. Um, so please, uh, please excuse her for her absence as she deals with that.
Didn't get a pop-up, but I'm voting in the affirmative.
Motion passes unanimously, six yes, zero no. We'll now move on to the inspirational moment and the pledge of allegiance, Miss Mackey.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Tonight's inspirational moment will be rendered by Miss Kristen Eubanks. And a little bit about Miss Eubanks. Mrs. Eubanks was named principal of Bridge Creek Elementary School in Richland Two in two thousand and thirteen. Bridge Creek Elementary serves approximately six hundred students in kindergarten to fifth grade and prior to becoming principal at Bridge Creek. Mrs. Eubanks served as assistant principal at Bridge Creek Elementary and teacher at Lake Carolina Elementary. Born and raised in Bamberg, that's a fun fact, I didn't know that. Mrs. Eubanks moved to Columbia, where she earned her undergraduate degree in chemical engineering and her master's degree in elementary education from the University of South Carolina. In addition, she completed her educational specialist degree in educational administration from Capella University. She's been an educator for fourteen years, she's been married for seventeen years and has a twelve-year-old son, big deal. As principal, Mrs. Eubanks has transformed Bridge Creek Elementary into an innovative, rigorous, and nurturing environment for all students. Through securing funding and community partnerships, Mrs. Eubanks has redesigned Bridge Creek into a whole-school STEAM medical magnet, M E D, at Bridge Creek. Students now have the opportunity to engage in twenty-first century learning through AVID, project-based learning, and STEAM integration. She developed a successful R O A R program for the acceleration of gifted young learners. And under her leadership, a M T S S program was designed to include a comprehensive character development program, restorative practices, mastery connect formative assessments, and data teams. Mrs. Eubanks' accomplishments have been recognized at the local, state, and national levels. She was selected to serve in the two thousand and twenty-one South Carolina A S C D Emerging Leaders Program. Under her leadership, M E D at Bridge Creek was recognized as a recipient of the two thousand and twenty Whole Child Award by South Carolina A S C D. And in addition, M E D at Bridge Creek, Bridge Creek was recognized by Magnet Schools of America as a two thousand and twenty new and emerging magnet school of distinction, outstanding. Most recently, Mrs. Eubanks was selected as the two thousand and twenty-one Administrator of the Year by Richland County Association of Educational Office Professionals and the South Carolina Association of Education Office Professionals, that is outstanding. Mrs. Eubanks and M E D at Bridge Creek continue to align their work to their vision of giving every child every chance every day. The future for our children is bright and the possibilities are endless. It is a pleasure to have you here and thank you so much for agreeing to be here. The floor is yours, bless you.
Thank you, Miss Mackey, um, Mister Chair and Doctor Davis, Richland Two Board, thank you so very much for allowing me this opportunity to share with you tonight. It is truly an honor to serve in our premier district as principal at Med at Bridge Creek. During the month of May, we have many celebrations and recognitions. It is a joy to celebrate our amazing teachers and staff for the countless things they do every day to give our children the best learning experience and especially this year. May is also the time, at the end of May, where we reflect on our school year and celebrate our wonderful children and their hard work and accomplishments. Miss Mackey, when I was asked to present, um, to the board today, I really, uh, thought a lot about what I was gonna talk about and, you know, it, I kept coming back to our children, our students. That's who inspires me and at Bridge Creek, as you stated, our motto is every child, every chance, every day. And it is our belief that when we support all of our children, um, by helping them identify their gifts and talents, we help them find inspiration and purpose in their work and ultimately the pathway to their own purpose. Tonight I have a video to share with you and I hope you get a glimpse of the inspiration that I get to enjoy every day as a principal.
And I'm really interested in art because I wanna grow like the, the artists. Um, my teachers inspire me, uh, that they help me learn. Probably just to have a good side life to learn new stuff and hope I can get to college.
Well, that makes me want to come to school every day because it's fun and I get to go outside.
Cause everyone go third grade school and go to high school.
When I grow up, I can be in the Navy. And then, and the best part about being Navy is that I can play planes.
What really inspires me at school is that I like having fun, learning and writing.
And I would like to learn about dolls and, and snow guns.
Um, I'm inspired by the children. Um, every day I come in, it's a new day, a new adventure. Um, I feel like I teach the kids, but in essence, I think I learn a lot from them. I learn a lot from who they are, but mostly who I am.
What inspires me to teach is when the students finally get that aha moment where they are realizing, oh, I got this.
Being a part of their educational journey is one of those, um, things that gives me joy.
What inspires me to teach is seeing students achieve their greatest potential in life.
I'm inspired by the hard work of others who paved the way for everyone to be great and to be successful.
I love that she's a lovely and kind and she lets everybody get a hug.
She's a very fun teacher and she lets us do all some things, like fun things.
She go, she put on songs for us to remember, stuff like prefixes, fact and opinion, and times.
She will always have our back and she, and she will, she will always teach us.
So I'm gonna close with a brief quote by Stacy Hunt and to be inspired is great, but to inspire is an honor. Thank you so much. At this time, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I need someone to make some fun songs for me to remember too. Alright, if I can have a approval of the agenda. A motion.
Mister Chair.
Miss Mackey.
I move to approve the agenda for the May twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, meeting of the Richland Two School Board of Trustees.
Motion's made by Miss Mackey, do I have a second? Seconded by Doctor Caution Parker, is there any discussion? No discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes five yes, one no. We'll now move on to the consent agenda, if I can have a motion.
Mister Chair.
Miss Agostini.
First, I'd like to request that we break up the consent agenda and I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Okay, so you wanna separate those two items out?
Yes, please.
Okay, so motions were made by Miss Agostini to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Do I have a second? Doctor Scott, did you say second? Okay, thank you. We have a second from Doctor Scott. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Um, I'll now entertain a motion for employment recommendations, releases, and in-district transfers. If I can have a motion to approve.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Miss Mackey.
I move to approve the employment recommendations, releases, and in-district transfers.
Motion's made by Miss Mackey, do I have a second? Seconded by Doctor Caution Parker, is there any discussion?
Uh, Mister Chair.
Miss Agostini.
I, I have a question about, and it's not the person, but the position on page thirteen, employee number two. And I'm wanting to know if this employee is replacing a previously, somebody who previously held this part-time position? Or is this a new position that's been created?
Mister Chair, members of board, give me a second, I wasn't anticipating, um, us breaking up the employment releases, employment recommendation release and in-district transfers or receive.
Yes.
Notification that there were concerns about that, so let me pull that up and look at that.
Take your time about that.
Situation. And that number is page thirteen?
Page thirteen, employee number two, it was in reference to, it was in an email that I sent to you and the board chair today.
This employee is retiring and this employee will be taken a position as a part-time employee. This part-time position that we've had to assist us with, uh, with this specific office, um, has been around for quite some time, so it is not a new, um, position. It's a position that's been filled by several individuals over the course of many years to assist with the workload in this particular office.
I- i- is there somebody currently or just recently left this position?
No one's currently in the position or recently left the position, we're actually contracted with different individuals to help with, to fulfill this role.
I, I, my concern is, last year, we had this position as a full-time position. And we repurposed this unfilled F T E position because we were told there was no need, that it went unfilled. And so we no longer had a need, so now here we are, a year later, saying that we need this part-time position and we've been in COVID. And without getting too specific, I can't imagine that we've had an increase in a need at this time for this position.
That's not quite accurate, um, members of the board. This position, being a part-time position, we have used this part-time position for many, many years. We'd asked for an F T E to fill the full-time position that we were unable to fill. This part-time position, position that we are talking about today existed prior to the F T E that was asked for in, in a previous budget that was approved by the board. So this has been around for multiple superintendents and administrations as using part-time individuals to help with the workload throughout the school year. So what we're doing now is assigning a particular individual and not subcontracting or contracting out with other former, um, administrators to fill this role. So we've already converted the F T E that is being mentioned to an executive director position to assist with, um, elementary and middle and high schools. This part-time position that is being identified in this, uh, in this information is a position that has already existed and I can provide the board with documentations of who has filled this role, uh, in a matter of, I think, maybe not in public session because we're talking specifically, we will be identifying individual, but historically, the district has had part-time officers in this position. Uh, and I can name a few of those officers there, former administrators. The full-time officer position was converted to the executive director position and it was determined that the director of this particular division, uh, and part-time members would be able to cover the hearings as needed. So we've been able to do this over the course of several years, we've been using this part-time position to assist us in getting the workload done. So it is not a new position and it's not the converted position.
Miss Agostini, further questions?
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Other board members, questions or comments? Alright, there's no other questions or comments, we'll now take the vote. Motion passes five yes, one no. Uh, we'll now move on to public participation, we have several folks signed up and we will start with David Overly. If you'll please come forward. Please remember not to name, uh, individuals and this is recorded and you have three minutes, Mister Overly.
Can I have one more second so I can talk better or?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Um, hello, Doctor Davis and board and everyone here, um, I appreciate the time tonight. Um, I've been related with Richland Two since nineteen seventy-eight. I dare say, I, I probably, my family has been continuously, uh, associated with this district since August of seventy-eight. My dad started teaching in nineteen seventy-eight, my sister and I went to school here, my nephew goes here, my daughters go here, my wife teaches here. Forty-three straight years, so I don't know if anybody has that kind of record right now, um, if you do, you're older than me, so don't admit it. Um, um, but, you know, I come to here tonight as a parent, um, solely. Countless mornings I hear daddy, can you please, please make it where I don't have to school, go to school today without a mask? And all I can say is, sweetie, I can't. I know my time here tonight is in, is, is, yeah, there's nothing to come of it. But I have to show them that I care about them enough to fight for them. I was one of the main fighters for people trying, for trying to get back to in-school teaching because my, especially my one twin absolutely had to have in-school teaching and she's flourished a lot better since she had it. So my, my last attempt is this, um, there's this, there's students in this county that gotta go to school without a mask going, in Richland, like seven-five. Um, if they can do it, we can do it. I, I have no reason to believe that if they can do it, we're not as good or better than them. Um, I know we have, quote, only twelve more days, as if the last twelve days don't mean much, but, um, I, I'm begging you, this is my last, last thing I can do is beg you to please give us the option to do that. The night that we had the waivers come out, uh, from D Heck and I filled them out for both daughters and by the time they got home from dance class, the email had come out saying, no, no go. I, I was crushed, I was absolutely crushed, I mean, uh, I can't describe it, how, how horrible I felt and, um, you know, I, I don't think there's enough science, you know, we have policies for students, for example, attendance, you have to have attendance across the board, every student must attend this many, many days. But when you have elementary school children that stay in the same classroom all day long, I think you can have different policies for children like that. Um, I think that's why some of them got to go to school face-to-face a little earlier, so y'all recognize that. Um, there's no science in this, there, there's absolutely no science showing that for twelve days, if, only one is it, cause let's remember, if we opt out, not everyone's gonna opt out. Um, but there's no science showing that the few students that would possibly go to school without a mask are gonna lead to any kind of great pandemic, um, you know, uprising or anything like that. So, um, like I said, I, I come to you as a parent, begging you, pleading you, this is my last hope. Um, I know this, again, quote, on twelve days, but you have no idea what it would mean to my daughters if they could go to school without a mask going, it would mean the world to them. Um, that's, that's all I've got for that, so, I think, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mister Overly. Next I have Luella Wallace and we'll give Miss Roof a few minutes to light down the podium.
Greetings, my name is Luella Wallace. I am the proud parent of twin girls who attend public schools in the Richland Two School District. I am here on behalf of parents who have children at Center for Inquiry, C F I. We have a few parents here today and more parents online to show support for our issue. Classes at C F I go in two-year loops with the same teacher and the children stay with the same class from kindergarten through fifth grade. The new C F I policy changes that arrangement. We are not here to debate the actual change, just the transparency, implementation, and timing of this change. We, we know that some parents have contacted you about our concerns and others have signed a petition. We believe that you have a copy of the petition in your emails and we will leave a copy here as well. There are not many kids that this immediately affects, so it does not involve all parents at the school. We would like the board and the superintendent to encourage the C F I administration and faculty to live up to the C F I rights and responsibilities and to follow the example of transparency set by the district in making decisions that fundamentally change their experience. Yes, the school has now agreed to hold information sessions, but the decision was only made after administration learned that some concerned parents plan to appeal directly to the board. Trust has been broken. Parents who are requesting basic information about a major change has been labeled as angry when the truth is, we are hurt, frustrated, and disappointed to learn that the ideal of receiving parent parental input was suggested while this change was under consideration, but the C F I administration and faculty decided against welcoming that input. Had that input been welcomed and/or if there had been an informational session to answer questions and help us better understand the reasoning for the change, we would not be here today. To help us all accountable, to help, to hold us all accountable to the C F I Code of Rights and Responsibilities, we are requesting that the board and the superintendent support our request to ask C F I administration to allow a qualified district official to moderate the upcoming forums. We request that the format of the forums be revised to allow questions to be also asked, uh, via the chat function during the meeting. Since the decision was announced after the deadline closed for the choice, uh, option, we, I also ask that the board and superintendent encourage C F I to delay the implementation of this new procedure for one year and conduct a parent survey after the information sessions to gauge parental support for the timing. This will help our children adapt to yet another change.
Miss Walla, I'm sorry, your three minutes is up.
Oh. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next I have Allison Allen.
Respected members of the board, thank you for mu- very much for taking the time to let us speak today. Um, greetings, my name is Allison Allen. I've emailed you all, uh, last week, so I'm sure my name looks familiar. I have two children at C F I in the Richland Two School District. I'm here to discuss representing the parents and speak about transparency, implementation, and communication. First, as the parents that are here and the ones online, I'd like to thank the school district and y'all included for your transparent communication about district-wide decisions. This has been a very difficult year. I have truly felt heard when I get a survey and the input that I'm allowed to give concerning my children. We appreciate the collaborative way Richland Two has made decisions for our schools, parents, and students. Unfortunately, we experienced the exact opposite type of communication from C F I. A little more than a week ago, the parents received a notification of a procedural change that will take effect immediately. This was received on five fourteen, after school hours, and in case you need to know, that was a Friday. This procedural change will change one of the pillars of C F I. The students would no longer stay with the same cohort of students as they loop every two years. While this is not currently written in any C F I documentation, school has had this tradition since the inception over twenty years ago. It is also one of the reasons many of us parents choose to send our children to C F I. I will speak for me and my husband that this is one of the main reasons we considered C F I for our children. The letter did not explain the reason for this monumental change in any detail. In fact, I would like to inform you it was more of a dictatorial decision. Because our C F I family has always demonstrated unwavering respect for C F I's rights and responsibilities, which include, quote, "A responsibility to ask questions and seek understanding," unquote, and, quote, "A responsibility to communicate clearly and listen carefully," unquote. Many parents thought they had missed the parent survey or a meeting that provided such information. That was not the case. A few parents here met with the school lead teacher and were surprised to learn this monumental change has been discussed for several years. However, nobody has mentioned it to the parents, not even parents that were in the parent-teacher partnership or school improvement council. I can tell you, I've had meetings with the school, the, the lead teacher and it was never mentioned to me. In addition, recruiting input from parents was indeed an idea discussed but rejected because we should trust the faculty to make these decisions. To be clear, we absolutely trust our faculty and staff, but we believe this was made in, in haste. This is, the need does not vacate the need for our C F I community as a whole to understand why a change is being consulted. See if I should honor their mission statement that we are responsible for developing ourselves, to create a more knowledgeable and democratic world. And we should not have been informed of this with three weeks of school remaining, thank you.
Thank you. Miss Jessica Pickett?
Good evening, my name is Jessica Pickett and I have two children, there, um, that attend Richland Two. Um, I am representing the parents tonight to, um, also address the sudden change at C F I and more or less about the timing of the change. Again, we're not here to dispute this change, um, it's just, we all have concerns about the timing and the announcement, um, that came to us a little over a week ago. Um, after meeting, after some of the parents met with the lead teacher, the way we understood it, that the decision was made months ago, none of us were ever informed of this, um, and again, um, as Allison said, um, we were notified on a Friday afternoon. Um, the problem that we have with this is the way it was done, notified late on a Friday afternoon. Um, we understood that as this decision had been in discussion, um, we just didn't feel that that was fair, that wasn't the C F I way, it's not the characteristics of the school as we know it. Many of us have children that have graduated from there, they have watched, um, their siblings go through here, um, and they've watched the looping process. As a basic issue of fairness, equity, inclusion, and most importantly transparency, it seems that announcing that decision, that decision as soon as this was something that was a topic of discussion would have afforded, afforded families the time to evaluate this and, and, and prepare the best options for their children. Um, it would have also provided the opportunity for parents to prepare children who may feel some anxiety about this change and reserve these last few weeks, um, of the school year to close out on a strong note. Um, also in question, we have, as, as far as the timing goes, it's the fact that they wanna start this immediately. That's where this really comes into play. Um, you know, we've all been through such, such a hard time, we all know this through this pandemic. Um, last week in an interview with the superintendent, Miss Molly Spearman, it was emphasized that the current need for stability for our students after COVID. So this is where our issue really comes in, the kids have been through so much, we just don't see making that change at this point allows them to come in, um, to an environment that they know that al- that always, it just absolutely encourages stability. Um, for our kids, changing things for the last two years of their loop isn't, is yet another disruption. However, this disruption could and should be avoided at this time. The best interest of the children needs to be paramount, needs to be the paramount consideration and guiding force. One could also argue that after a year with much less face-to-face interaction, it could be the right time and we understand that. However, this argument could be made also that after being apart for much of this year, coming back to the stability, um, of the C F I environment as they coming back to the stability, um, of the CFI environment as they know it and, and bringing the children back together, we feel is more important than ever. For our kids who want to finish this last loop at CFI together and graduate together, as many of them have come in to, from kindergarten together as well.
Ms. Pickett, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next I have Erica Serbin.
Greetings, my name is Erica Serbin, and I have three kids who attend public schools in the Richland Two School District. I am representing the parents to speak about the CFI issue being done not like the CFI way. I have two graduates of CFI, and I've witnessed the traditions of the school for the past eight years. For those who may not be familiar with CFI, our school website describes our community perfectly. The students, parents, and staffs of the Center for Inquiry are responsible for developing ourselves as more thoughtful, caring, and intelligent people who delight in learning and are committed to creating a more compassionate, equitable, knowledgeable, and democratic world, unquote. The lack of transparency about this decision does not live up to the culture of the school. This decision, as you heard, was emailed on a Friday afternoon a few weeks before the end of the school year, and most importantly, after the window for making a change of, of school after the first choice program had closed. This behavior deteriorates the intent of the program's vision statement that, end quote, "invests in a culture where all voices are heard and valued," end quote. If there are justifiable issues that warrant a need to split classes up, then we, as educated parents, should be respected enough by CFI to be included in the way ahead for improvement. We also mentioned the CFI rights and responsibilities, which were not followed in making such a decision. I'm going to quote a little bit from the CFI rights and responsibilities. "We have a responsibility to ask questions and seek understanding. We have a responsibility to encourage others. And we have a responsibility to communicate clearly and listen carefully." We believe that Richland Two, the board, superintendent, you've all done a great job in following these. However, we, the parents at CFI, take our, take our responsibilities seriously despite the failure of the CFI administration to do the same in this instance. Now, having been informed of the change at CFI, we are asking our questions, we are encouraging others, and we are attempting to clearly communicate our dissatisfaction at this change, which is supposed to take immediate effect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next we have Mary Beth Berry.
Greetings, my name is Mary Beth Berry, and I have one child who attends public schools in the Richland Two School District. I'm representing the parents to sum it all up. While we respect the CFI administration's prerogative to make procedural changes at the school, we have a responsibility to ask, what are the objectives of this change and why is this particular change needed to accomplish these objectives? Are there alternative solutions? What metrics or objective standards will be used to decide how the students will be separated? What parameters will be used to measure success or failure of class reorganization? Why is there a rush to make this destabilizing change after the COVID-19 pandemic, which is clearly destabilizing for everyone, when instead what the kids need is stability? If this change has been a work in progress for months or years, why were the separate classes not working together on a joint-grade project or projects to prepare the students for this change? Why were the parents and students not involved at all in the decision-making process regarding this monumental change? Why were the parents and students not informed about this change until a Friday afternoon, three weeks before the end of the school year, and well after the first school choice window had already closed? Why can't this be a phased-in change? We are respectfully requesting Dr. Davis and the board to restore due process rights to the students and parents of CFI and to strive for transparency and collaboration amongst all the stakeholders by first delaying the implementation of this decision for one year, to at least allow for parents to have fair and equitable chance to learn, understand, and explain and explore all our options for our children, conduct open forums on this big change with a qualified district official to moderate the forums and allow for questions to be asked via the chat function during the meeting, possibly conducting a phase-in of this class organization plan at CFI, and seeking answers, all of the answers, to our questions. I mean, we don't want to be labeled as nasty or angry or gossiped about because we ask questions. We just want to be included in the discussion about things that affect our children. Thank you for hearing our concerns and our emails and your demonstrated transparency to the families of Richland Two School District.
Thank you. And we next have Larry Smalls.
Can I take the, can I remove a mask, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, good evening, all of you. It's a pleasure being before you on tonight. Uh, my name is Larry Smalls. I have two children that attend Richland School District Two. I was looking at your organizational chart, uh, last night, and I noticed that all of you have the greatest responsibility in maintaining and facilitating this district. But y'all don't do this autonomously, autonomously, uh, because y'all have to give an account to the parent. As a matter of fact, on top of the chart, it says Richland County Citizen. So I'm coming to you in regard to the mask mandate that has been placed on our children for a needless amount of time. Uh, not, I don't have to go into numbers regarding the, the graphs and the charts, because of course, all of you have been, uh, collaborating with, uh, DHEC. Obviously, you've been seeing on the website regarding the CDC, their policy and their procedures, but I still have concern as a parent. And the reason being is because when this, uh, mask mandate was implemented back in March through the Stafford Act, our governor made suggestions. And in step with the governor, the school board made decisions regarding looking out for the best interest of our children. Rightfully so, because we're dealing with a pandemic that we weren't aware of, a lot of unknowns. Soon thereafter, there was another, uh, I guess, communication from our governor in regard to opening the schools. I'm certain all of you agree that having our schools opened is vitally important for our children, their education, and their ability to collaborate and interact and to talk, to socialize. That is the basis of who we are as a nation. We're a social nation. We communicate. And in step and in harmony with the governor, y'all made changes, adjustments, and y'all even gave a three-step plan. And as a parent, I wanted to understand that plan so that I know how to adjust, how to make sure that I'm in step with the district. This last, uh, change, uh, kind of threw me for a loop because, uh, in, I believe, one of the letters given by, uh, Libby Ruth, it stated that y'all had to consult an attorney. And I don't need to tell you, anytime an attorney is involved regarding the welfare of our children, that's not a good thing. Because I am a parent of Richland County, I am urging the council members to please rescind this mask mandate. I mean, I really believe that this will be for the best interest of the children and not just ourselves and the rights of the governed superces, the rights of those that govern. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, that concludes our public participation portion of the meeting. We will now move on to, uh, voting on executive session items. If I can please have a motion on item seven dot one, student appeals.
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Caution Parker.
Um, student appeals, student one, I recommend deny the appeal.
Second.
We doing them?
Are you doing them together?
Together.
Together, okay. Student one, deny the appeal. Student two, deny the appeal.
Second.
All right, motions were made by Dr. Caution, Dr. Caution Parker, and seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes unanimously. I'll now have a motion for item seven dot two, student admission request into the district's adult education program.
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Caution Parker.
Recommend that we approve the student request into the district's adult education program.
Motion's been made by Dr. Caution Parker, seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item seven dot three, personnel matter regarding termination appeal, if I can have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Caution Parker.
I move that we deny an employee's request for a meeting with the board regarding a grievance appeal and uphold the employee's termination.
Motion made by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? Dr. Scott?
It's on, yes. I wanted to just make a comment before we vote on this. As we remember, we talk about being a premier school district. We make the motion that we have premier parents and we're living a premier community, and that, most importantly, we have premier employees. To hear a motion of to deny a personnel matter for terminating one of our employees, it sickens me to my core. And the reason for that is, I think everyone deserves due process. If we say that our employees are premier when they work for us, when there is an issue, they should also be premier, and we allow them to come before the board and share their concerns. If this motion passes, I want everyone, under the sound of my voice, to know that you are not premier. Because if you are, you give us a hundred and ten percent, especially during this pandemic and prior to. And to know that you can be terminated. And this sitting board here does not have enough respect to allow you to come in and to hear your side of the story is just a slap in the face to our premier employees. So let's just take this vote and let's see how premier you are. And also, let's just remember that it may not be your turn asking for this request, but maybe next time it could be. So remember how we vote and remember how we think of you as a premier employee. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I do want to concur with, um, Dr. Scott that, um, I feel that we owe it to our employee to provide them due process and, um, come and let them air their grievance. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Mackey.
I know that with, uh, employee matters, there are details that the public is not aware of. And, um, to be accused of, of mistreating someone, I know it's a bit much, but I do want to ask the question, has due process been denied since that, that term has been come? Is there not a process?
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Dr. Davis? Yes, thank you, Ms. Mackey. Due process has not been denied to this employee.
Thank you.
The board, administration has followed the board policy. The employee does have the opportunity to make a request to be heard, um, by the board. The board has the ability to either grant that request or deny that request as any quasi-judicial legislation, quasi-judicial organization has. Every case that's brought to the court of appeals is not necessarily heard if it's made the request. They feel that the decision of the law, decision-maker has been, uh, is in accordance with the expectations of policies, rules, and law. So the post, the employee has had the due process of, of appealing this decision to the superintendent, and now he is appealing the decision to the board.
Mr. Chair.
Um, I need to make sure that other board members who have not spoken have an opportunity to speak before I come back to you. So are there other board members who have not spoken on this issue that would like to speak? Seeing none, Dr. Scott.
Okay, thank you. We are the supervisors of the superintendent. If the superintendent denies an appeal and it's brought before the board and we refuse to hear that employee, we have denied them their due process. And I will say this, I have been on the board a little over nine years. It's not that often that an employee wants us to listen to a case. And you mean to tell me that we cannot afford them the opportunity? As I stated, it's been over nine years that I've been on the board, and I think in my nine years, only four employees have made this request. And with this new board, I think we've denied at least three of them. What is the problem? We were elected by the community, by many of these employees, and we don't have the respect. We don't have the respect to allow an employee to come before us and share their side. And I'm going to say this again, under the sound of my voice. It may not be you this time, but it could be you. And know that when it's you, this board is going to deny you the opportunity to be heard, but they're going to call you a premier employee. That is disgusting.
Dr. Caution Parker, did you have a comment? Oh, I, I'd just like to make one comment. I, I, I feel a certain kind of way, Dr. Scott, that when things don't go the way of certain board members, that we get to personal attacks, like slapping the face and disgusting and challenging my integrity. Though you didn't name me, but certainly, uh, that, that's the tone that you've taken. I would appreciate if we could not make it personal because we have disagreements on how to conduct the business of the board. I think you yourself many times has said that you feel that it's personal, but it should be about business. I ask that same respect in return. You've already made two comments, so that, that's Robert rules of order, only allow two comments. We'll now have the vote. We'll now have the vote. We'll now have the vote. Motion fails. If I can have a, uh, do the tie, if I can have another motion on the matter? Yes, Dr. Scott.
I move that we grant an employee request for a grievance meeting with the board to be scheduled at a future meeting.
Motion's made by Dr. Scott. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Agostini. Is there any discussion? With no further discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes for yes to no. We'll now move on to item seven dot four. Uh, there is no actual- There is no actual item for seven dot four, there's no further action under the executive session. We'll now move on to item eight dot one, a report on the superintendent's highlights, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Chair, and to the members of our board, to those who are in our audience and attendance this afternoon and tonight, and to those that are viewing. It gives me great pleasure to present the superintendent highlights for tonight's board meeting. I'll start with our school nurse of the year. The Rice Creek Elementary School Nurse Shannon White has been named the 2021 Richland Two School Nurse of the Year. Ms. White knew from a young age when she visited a children's hospital in Georgia that she wanted to become a nurse. In his nomination, Rice Creek Principal Stacy Gaston highlighted her exceptional knowledge in the field of nursing and her drive to expand her knowledge through professional development. Now turning to our Blythewood High School U of SC Professional Development School Award. Blythewood High School received a pleasant surprise earlier this month during the virtual thirtieth birthday celebration for the University of South Carolina's Professional Development School Network. Blythewood High was named the 2021 Winner of the U of SC PDS Exemplary Achievement Award. Congratulations to Principal Matt Sherman and his team of professionals for being only the third school in the state and the second in Richland Two to win an award. Killian Elementary School won it last year. Eight Richland Two students won first place medals in the state track and field meets this past weekend, and I had an opportunity to attend both days. In the four A state championships, Brianna Rodriguez, a sophomore at Westwood High School, won the 100 meters and the 400 meter hurdles. Westwood senior and Coastal Carolina signee, Robert Johnson, won the 400 meters. In the five A championships, Blythewood High School sophomore, Arena Williams, won the 400 meter dash. I'm sorry, Ariana Williams, won the 400 meter dash. Blythewood Junior, Micae Sh- now this is a new one. Micae Sharia, Micae Sharia Brown, won the 100 meter hurdles. And Spring Valley sophomore, Nigel Ankrum, won the 100 meters and the 200 meters dash. Spring Valley senior, Robert Reed, sophomore, Nigel Ankrum. Senior and West Point signee, John Javis, and senior and Newberry College signee, Jalen Crumplin, won the four by 100 relay. I saw that race, it was phenomenal. It was, it was, it was action packed. The North-South All-Star Baseball Game, Blythewood High School softball coach, Jordan Atkinson, is set to coach the North-South All-Star Game in June. She led the Lady Bengals to a fourteen and five record and won the Class Five A Region Four Championship. Coach Atkinson teaches eighth grade English Language Arts at Muller Road Middle School. Ridgeview High School students, Ridgeview High Schools, Mary Harmon is the 2021 Midlands Region Career and Technical Education Career Specialist of the Year. This was an award by the Midlands Education and Business Alliance. Ms. Harmon now competes for the state award. If you're looking for a medical emergency, if you, I'm sorry, if you're having a medical emergency, you might like to have these four students nearby. Michaela Clark, Ethan Gregg of Blythewood High School, Sidney Moore of Spring Valley High School, and Cameron Smith of Westwood High School have successfully completed the Richland Two Med Two Midlands Technical College MET Program. Most importantly, they have passed both the written and skills component of the National Registry of Emergency Medical Technician Certification Exam. They are now fully certified to practice in South Carolina. Six additional students have passed the skills assessments and will take their written exams prior to graduation. Two Spring Valley High School students appear to have found their pathways to purpose. Theodore Foster and Pedro Yulencang received the highest scores on the Michelin After Two test that was administered in March. As Michelin Technical Scholars, they received full scholarships to Midlands Technical College to major in Electrical Engineering or Mechatronics. During their studies, they will work as paid apprentices at Michelin. Upon graduation and passing the final After Two test, these students are offered full-time employment with Michelin as reliability engineers with annual salaries in a range of $60,000. Richland Two is accepting applications for choice two. Students who would like to attend a school other than their residentially zoned school or a magnet program can apply to do so until May 31st. Also, middle and high school students who want to attend virtual only classes next year should apply to attend the Richland Two Virtual School Program. Applications are available only on the district's website at richlandtwo.org/choice. Applications for choice, magnet programs, and the Richland Two Virtual School Programs are being accepted through May 31st at 5:00 PM. Registration for our kindergarten is underway. Please visit the Richland Two website to begin registering your child. Early registration for kindergarten is now through June the 11th. Children must be five years, five years old on or before September 1st, 2021, to register for the 2021-2022 school year and to start kindergarten in August of 2021. If your child is currently enrolled in a Richland Two pre-K program, you do not have to submit a new student kindergarten enrollment application. You will need to complete your annual registration instead. And last but not least, Richland Two Schools and administrative offices will be closed on Monday, May 31st in observance for the Memorial Day holiday. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board and community for listening to this, this board meeting superintendent holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Next, we'll move on to our eight dot two, a report on the third quarter financials. Dr. Davis, Dr. Marley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We have Dr. Marley, our senior chief financial officer, to come share with us the third quarter financial report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is a reporter on our third quarter, that's the quarter that begins in January one, runs through March 31st. And you have that report in your, in your, in your docket, in your packet. And what I would like to do is normal, one is we are on target. Kind of, I feel like I need a traffic signal in front of me where I have a red, if things are bad, yellow if they're slow, and green if they're good. We've got green lights throughout this, throughout this board report. I like to compare the revenues and expenditures over the last five years. Gives us some kind of indicator of whether we're on a normal path or not. We're two thirds, three fourths of, three fourths, two thirds, I can't do math, three fourths of the way through the year. As you can see on page one, we've received about seventy-seven percent of our revenues. That is exactly what our five-year average is. So in terms of our revenue stream coming into the district from all of our sources, some of the sources are slightly a little bit off here and there, but overall, the total sources are right on target for our last five-year average of seventy-seven point four percent. The expenditures, and as you know, as I've mentioned earlier, early is, when we do this, the very first part of the year, things are a little bit more erratic because things come in spits and, and, and buckets of different paces. But as the year goes through the end, we get a little bit more, more normal. And so our expenditure pattern is a little bit closer to our five-year average. So far, expenditures are tracking at sixty-three point four percent of the total budget. That's slightly below the five-year average. Our five-year average is about sixty-six and a half percent. So our expenditures are right on target to be at this, if they keep this pace in the fourth quarter, we would be just slightly under our overall budget in terms of any, any type of surplus, but we're tracking below our five-year average. Moving on to our special revenues and our EIA funds. And thank you, Tony, for moving the PDF, whoever's doing that, thank you. The EIA funds were, were scheduled to get about twenty-four point two, twenty-four point one million dollars over the course of the year. We've received eighteen point six percent, eighteen point six million dollars. So far, we spent about nine million dollars to date, we encumbered about six hundred thousand, and we have about fourteen point four million dollars balance to spend. A lot of these, as we've talked about, these are earmarked funds from the State Department, EIA funds that are spent for specific purposes, usually during a specific time of the year. For instance, an obvious one would be the summer reading program. We're going to spend that in the summer. Our special revenues, page four, these are primarily our grant funds. We're targeting about forty-three, almost forty-four million dollars for the year. So far, we've received about twenty, a little over twenty million. We've spent just about nineteen point one, encumbered another five million, and have about nineteen point six million balance to spend. Again, these are dedicated earmarked funds that we monitor in terms of how they are spent according to the grant purposes. And all are well in balance in terms of the targeted budget. Your school board budget is on page five, everything is there. As you can see, we are somewhat under budgeted in terms of expenditures. One of the obviously ones is no one's traveling much. And we haven't spent, you haven't spent as much as your normal travel budget as you normally would. Hopefully, that will be able to be picked up next year with the ability to travel a little bit more. And then the last page is our bonding and our capital improvement funds. We are well into our bond referendum. As you know, we've issued about two hundred and fifty million dollars of the four hundred and sixty-eight. And we are, and I'm sure Mr. Anderson will, will give you more details in his capital improvement project, but we are aggressively spending money now. We started a little slow, but we have the three large rebuild projects right now undergoing. And we'll be probably issuing, we may need to sell some more bonds in late summer. Probably another seventy-five to eighty million dollars because our capital, our cash flow needs are going up. As, as expected, they're all on target, but this is a really big time of our expenditure pattern for our capital fund projects. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Overall, we are right on target and right on our five-year average for all expenditure and revenues.
Board members, questions or comments? Ms. Mackey.
Dr. Marley, thank you for keeping us abreast of what's going on and for your transparency in these reports. Just, just curious, I know that because of the pandemic, there is an increase, from what I understand, in supplies, you know, lumber and things of that nature. Is that throwing off our project budgets at all with the significant increase in supplies?
It's had some impact, but in terms of our overall expenditures, no. We, we have under, we have underspent for like travel, conferences and things like that. A lot of the pandemic-type expenditures were covered by the federal funds that we got, the multiple series of ESTRA and CAREFAC, CARES Act funding that we got. So we feel comfortable that we, we have that under control and well in balance, well in budget for those expenditures.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Marley.
Thank you. Dr. Scott. Your mic's not on.
On item number three twenty-eight, industry certificates, what is that?
What page are we on?
It's on page three.
Dr. Scott, if you'll move your mic, leave your mic closed.
Page four.
Page four.
Well, page three with the number here, yes. Number three twenty-eight.
That's Fund Three Twenty-Eight Industry Certificates. I believe that's for our CATE programs. I'm not quite sure. We may have someone that could clarify that. I can certainly get an answer for you.
Do we have someone here? Dr. Davis, can you clarify that?
Dr. Davis.
Thank you. No, ma'am. I don't know exactly what the Fund Three Twenty-Eight is. I would say though, we have had this conversation multiple times when we present this. If we could just simply give the board a breakdown of all of the account numbers or the numbers three oh two, three oh nine, so that they'll have a working document.
They have that, actually, I gave everybody a copy of that fund manual. But again, if, or if you ask us, if you just give us a little heads up, but it's a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the budget year. We haven't spent any, excuse me, we spent about eighty-eight thousand. I'm assuming it has something to do with some career technology type certificates of some kind.
Okay, if you guys can find out the correct answer, because if we have a budget here, we do need to have people in place who's able to answer this question. If they can't be here in person, at least be able to have these folks on a Zoom call or a phone call away. Because if we're talking about looking at the budget and being transparent and being responsible for how we spend the taxpayers' money, I need someone here who can answer these questions, or at least if they're not here present, they are on the telephone able to answer that question.
Dr. Scott, I would just like to remind the board that we did receive a notebook from the district which delineated every single one of these.
Mr. Manny, thank you for that information, but our constituents don't receive a notebook, so they don't know what we're spending. So please allow me the courtesy to ask questions and to get answers.
I'm going to allow you, but we've also had the discussion that during COVID, we have limited staff.
Whether I choose to use the notebook or whether I come here and ask questions, I have that right. So I'm going to move to the next description. Number three fifty-seven, summer reading program, can you just tell me a little more? I'm just trying to basically figure out if this is summer reading for students to attend free summer school? Or is this for materials? Or someone can explain that.
I would imagine it's for the summer reading program funded by the State Department for, for summer school.
You say you can imagine. I need a clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that the- Dr. Scott, I hate to do this. I want you to ask the questions, but we, we've had this discussion previously that during COVID, we don't have all the staff.
Exactly.
And we've stated-
If you heard me earlier, I said staff don't have to be here. Oh, you can hit that gravel.
Dr. Scott, if you would please allow me to finish.
But if they could be on the telephone.
I understand what, if you would let me finish, what I was going to state was, if board members would submit these questions ahead of time, you can ask them in public and give staff an opportunity to have the answers for you. Not to, not for lack of transparency, as you've indicated, but to actually provide more transparency and provide you with the answers.
That's great for you. We have different learning styles, different teaching styles. And if I choose to wait to address my questions here, I have that right. I'm going to move on to the next question, number.
I just want the public to understand this is not an attempt to, to have lack of transparency.
Thank you. So I'm going to go to the next description, which is number eight thirty-two. That's the rule initiative. Just wanted to know, I know we didn't do a whole lot of recruiting because of the COVID. That's the very next page. My question would be, does this money carry over? And what do we have in place? And I think Ms. Williams is here to be able to address that question. Does the money carry over? And if it does, do we have any initiatives in place to use this money?
I do not believe that funding does carry over. We will probably be-
So it does carry over?
It does not.
Okay. And my very, thank you for that. And my last one is number three seventy-one. And that's CSI Impoundal Priority Special. Can you tell me what exactly is that?
I'm looking for three-
It's on page three. Number three seventy-one, CSI Impoundal Priority Special. Four hundred eighty-three thousand, and it looks like we've only spent two hundred and fifteen thousand so far.
As far as the finance side, all I can tell you is that's how much we spent and how much we have in balance. But in terms of what that program is, I remember looking at it one time because I never knew what the CSI was, but I don't remember what it is right now.
Okay.
It's the- Dr. Davis.
Dr. Davis, can you?
It's the support that's provided to us from the State Department for those students that schools have been identified that need additional critical support. There are only a handful of schools in our district that qualify for the CSI Impoundal Priority Special funding.
So how do we use it with the schools?
It's allocated to the schools and the schools use it for various projects. You can use it for resources for students, tutoring. It's, it's basically like the priority schools, the old priority school termin- terminology that was used when they got the technical assistance money was for additional support for students to help with academic performance.
Can you later give me a list of what priority schools that we have?
Sure.
Thank you. That's all I have, Dr. Marley. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like, but, Dr. Davis, before we do that, I just want to reiterate my comments that district staff, there's no intent to have a lack of transparency. Any question I've ever asked of them of the budget, they provide full reports, transparency as far as the funding. We are in COVID. Typically, we have more staff here that do answer these questions for us as they come up. And even then, on occasion, some of these line items are so specific and the staff member who's responsible for that can't be here and the district has had to get back to us. If board members can provide some of these questions ahead of time, I think the district staff can come better prepared to answer the questions for us. And I also want to state that we did get the notebook, which does have, I mean, when we're asking what is it, I think at least a basic description in the notebook to start with. So we were provided with that material. So we were provided with that material. So again, not a lack of transparency. In fact, full disclosure as to what each of those are. And as Dr. Miley has stated many times, this is complex. Each of these line items, there's a lot to them. Dr. Miley has a, a staff that manages this. And, and even with that, I think the complexity, and Dr. Scott, you would have to admit, we've seen the complexity of this budget increase over the years as the line items have increased and the, the money flows. And on top of that, we add the PPE and COVID and other federal money that Dr. Miley's staff is contending with, which is great. But it does add workload. So I, I would just ask respect, at the same time we're asking respect of staff. We should also ask respect of board members just to, to help out so we can get the answers that we need. And try to bring them, if we can, ahead of time. And also provide understanding when they can't answer them, because it's just, there's a lot to it. There's a lot there. And the, the answer will be provided. It just may not be able to be done in the meeting. When we haven't done our part to help out ahead of time. Dr. Davis?
Can I make a comment to that?
If I can let Dr. Davis speak and then I'll get the-
Oh, absolutely.
I'll yield. I'll yield.
Dr. Scott?
Yes, I'll go back to that. I understand it's COVID season. But what I asked was if they cannot be present, that they can be available over the telephone. And that's not asking too much, and that's not being disrespectful. That's being accountable. That's being transparent. Thank you.
Dr. Davis?
Mr. Chair.
I'll yield to Mrs. Agostini.
Mrs. Agostini, you had a question?
I, I just wanted to make a comment, and I appreciate Dr. Miley's presentation, but I too share Dr. Scott's frustration. When we've got line item questions, it happened to me, I don't know if it was the last presentation or the one before that, that, you know, we've got these lineups. And we have questions and our constituents want to know the answer to these questions. So I would like to see, when we do have these budget reviews, if we could have other members on the executive staff available telephonically or in some capacity so that they can answer these questions, so we don't have to keep going round and round. And while I appreciate, Mr. Chair, your request to have these questions ahead of time. I, I spent a great deal of time going through this, going through all of the agenda. And I don't always have my questions, as you saw an email from me today at about eleven o'clock. But that was the earliest I had to get to you the three most important questions that I had. So sometimes we do have to wait until the meeting to ask our questions. Thank you.
Other board members? Dr. Caution Parker?
As one who's worked with this for sixteen years, I understand the, the complexity of Dr. Miley and what he has to do in his office. I also understand that the responsibilities for all of these accounts are divided amongst a lot of people. I also understand that they are hourly employees and to, they have to have them come in in the evening or call them at home. It's overtime. And that's something we have to pay. So I think if we can submit questions in advance, or if we can look through our notebook that we have at home, I think that would help tremendously. Thank you. And I'm, and I'm speaking as one who worked very closely with this for sixteen years.
Mr. Chair, there are salary employees, so there's no overtime for salary employees.
Dr. Scott, you've had two opportunities to speak.
There's no overtime for salary employees. Thank you.
You've had two opportunities to speak. Ms. Mackey, did you have a comment? Okay. Thank you. Dr. Miley, I appreciate you and your staff. And I also appreciate the opportunity you provide to us to come in and speak with you and lengthen on this at any time. So thank you.
Be happy to. And we, we, post-COVID, perhaps we could have more staff here. And if we had this combination of staff here and questions ahead of time, I think we'd answer a whole lot of questions with the experts in the room that, that know the details. So appreciate that.
All right, we'll move on. Yes, sir. Dr. Davis?
I, I would like to respectfully ask the board, we, we've had this conversation the last time we've had this budget meeting. Again, terminology transparent, the term transparency and accountability are being used. These terms are often used when individuals may be seeking, and I'm not saying that that's the intent of Dr. Scott or Mrs. Agostini. But those are buzzwords as if there is something being done inappropriately. I, I, and I said, so I say, that's why I don't think you're saying it. Again, and, and I said that the last, I, I said that the last time. Yes, ma'am. I apologize. I, I would like to-
Dr. Scott, please, please provide. Dr. Scott? Dr. Scott, can we, can I please have order in this meeting? Dr. Scott, can I please have order to this meeting? Dr. Scott, can I please have order to this meeting? Dr. Scott, can I please have order to this meeting? Dr. Scott, you've already spoken twice on the matter. You've already spoken twice on the matter. Dr. Scott, you've spoken twice on the matter.
Mr. Manning?
Dr.-
I don't think what Dr. Davis had to say.
Dr. Davis?
I, I don't believe that our community is watching our board meetings and participating in our board meetings to see exchanges like this. I show no disrespect to any of our board members by making a comment about this administration and about terms of transparency and accountability. The point that I was trying to make is that there's a three hundred and eleven million dollar budget that we are reviewing. It's a quarterly update. This budget and these line items have already been allocated. To expect district administration to know exactly the detailed information and the budget of the, of the EIA, EFA and General Fund down to the T without any preparation. It's not really appreciating the level of responsibility and the information that is required to be able to do that. Asking that we have someone here, that could be a number of any of individuals, particularly if we don't know what the questions are. So I don't know if it's gonna be a question for arts in education. I would need to have someone for arts in education to be here to talk specifically to the detail so that we are transparent and accountable, to give you the amount of details and general, and, and so the amount of details that you're requesting. And not just a general overview, which is what this budget update is about. It's a general overview of where we are with expenditures and, and things that have been encumbered, revenue received and budgeted up to this date. We're getting in questions about specifics. We have things like formative assessment, grade ten assessment, science reimbursement, industry certifications, career in technology, education, reading coaches, at-risk learners, four-year-old program, summer reading programs, adult education, teacher supplies, aid to the district. I mean, the list goes on and on and on with the number of expenditures that have been allocated through this budget. McKinney Vento, adult ed, Department of Defense Grant Three, Department of Defense Grant Six. We, I have no idea, my administration would have no idea who we need to have here to be able to answer which question may come up about what expenditure. And so to order for us to be able to be transparent, it would, it would help us so that we can give you the detailed information. If that line item is a specific line item that our board members felt the general public need to know so that there's a level of trust that this administration is being prudent in the spending of the funds. We have complete, we have continuously had great ratings when it comes to our audits. We're not misusing funds in, in this district. And sometimes the appearance of using that terminology over whether it's intended or not. It has become a cultural norm to use the term accountability and transparency when we're saying we don't believe we're being accountable. But I would never say that a board member is saying that the district is not, because we're all a part of this district. From the, from the boards to the administration, to the teachers. And, and there are many individuals who listen to this, who are responsible for these accounts. And when they're, I'm not talking about the superintendent, but when they're hearing us ask those questions like that and they weren't able to prepare to come and give a more detailed description, if that's what's needed, then they may interpret that as being, they may interpret that the wrong way. So I just respectfully ask the board, if, if, when we do these reports, if you want a detailed budget of each of these line items, then please ask us, let us know and direct us in that, and we can provide you with a detailed budget of each line item. But we've never had to do that in this district before. And so I do have to question sometimes, why is this issue seem to only come up during this time period? And that, that's all I respectfully request of the board.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, just a question of Dr. Miley, just looking at the number of line items. There are hundreds of line items, are there not? Line items in our budget?
I could not, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you.
Are there not hundreds of line items in our budget? I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not, it's not ten or twenties.
Sixty or so revenue sources just from the State Department. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Dr. Miley.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item eight dot three, the first reading of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two General Fund Budget.
This is a, this is the time period when we're normally bringing you, well into this time period, first or second reading of our budget. I was just speaking to Chairman Manning before the board meeting started, how odd this time period is. Because in the past, we've had all the state issues resolved by April. We've got a state budget. We know what the EFA numbers are, the base student costs. And we've got sixty-five percent of our revenue stream to, to the district, pretty much known at this point in the past. And then we would talk about the county revenues in terms of a millage rate increase. Over the last two or three years, it's flip-flopped. And now we actually get stuff from the county well in advance of the stuff we get from the state. We still don't have a state budget. Sixty-five percent of our revenue stream is from the state budget, and we don't have a state budget yet. So it's a very difficult time. The budget proposal that we're bringing to you tonight may not be the same budget proposal we bring you on June twenty-ninth for third reading. We don't know what the House is gonna do. We don't know what the Senate and House Conferences are gonna do. And we don't know what the governor's gonna do if he gets a budget and does any vetoes before June twenty-ninth. So given that we've brought a budget today, it may be, it may look exactly like this in June twenty-ninth. If the House and Senate agree at everything, if the governor signs the budget and doesn't veto anything that might affect our budget. But at this time, I may have to get a simple word. So I preface this because what we do tonight and what we show you tonight and share with you tonight may not be the same thing we have in, in June twenty-ninth. And we're not a hundred percent positive, because, let me back up. The House adjourned and agreed that they would not come back until the June eighth period to take up the Senate version of the budget. If they actually do anything, then the Senate has agreed to come back, I think it's the seventeenth of June, to consider the House actions. That's if the House acted, and if they can concur on anything and sign a, and, and pass a budget and send it to the governor. If that happens, then the governor will have five days to review it and then have five days to veto. So that's how we might have a budget by June twenty-ninth. If those things don't happen, I'm, I'm not gonna put any money that there wouldn't be another continuing resolution passed by the House and Senate. And therefore, we would have to pass another continuing resolution for our budget. So all of this is planned. We're hopeful. We think it may happen. There are a lot of people that will benefit from this budget if the House and Senate can concur and the governor signs the budget. It's a lot in the budget. If you remember, I, I outlined the last time the Senate, the House had passed a fairly meager budget. The Senate got an increase from the Board of Economic Advisers in between the House and the Senate version. The Senate added three hundred and fifteen million dollars, and so the Senate version is much more helpful to K through twelve, teacher raises and things like that. I did mention that the Board of Economic Advisers was meeting on May the twentieth. That was last Thursday. They met. They did not revise the budget estimate. So we are dealing with the same dollar amount of funding that the Senate passed. So we're somewhat hopeful that at least they're not gonna be arguing about how much money they have and that they can concur on some kind of confere vote. Given that, we've brought to you a budget tonight that I outlined most of the key ingredients of that budget proposal last time. As the, on the, on, and I apologize. And I have, I've made this clear to Dr. Davis that we're not happy with the way we're doing the budgets these days. This, this isn't a premier job. We're doing the best we can. We're not really happy with the way it's structured and the way we're having to do it, given the county and the, in the state legislature. We understand that. We're doing the best we can, but this isn't the way, the way we like to do business. But this is what we're dealt with. So we've put a, a, a budget together based on the current estimate from the county auditor on property taxes, the current Senate version of revenues from the State Department and EFA funding. And as you can see on the first page, the total revenue picture is increasing by about thirteen point eight, four million dollars from FY twenty twenty-one in our proposed twenty-one, twenty-two budget. The key components of that increase are on the second page. And this second page is a typical standard process of which we identify those incremental projects or expenditures that we're outlining for the district. First of all, we think this outline and this budget proposal mirrors your priorities because it's employee compensation-driven, almost ninety percent. It mirrors employees' priorities, employee staff, because it's compensation-related. Couple of items are mandated by the state, the increase in health insurance, the increase in the retirement employer share. Those are both mandated. Teacher salary increase for last year and this year. And I, let me make sure we make that clear. UPA, the state, the state passed a special legislation back in January, fifty million dollars for a retroactive teacher step increase. That's the annual longevity increase that all teachers, certified teachers get. They passed that with fifty million dollars. We knew it was one-time money, but that's a recurring expense. If we give an employee a raise via a step and it costs us a thousand dollars this year, well, that employee still gets that same step, another step the next year. So it's a recurring expense to us, but they only gave us one-time money for that first twenty twenty-one step. We've built that into the budget because we, we need to make that a recurring ob, uh, uh, line item. We've increased, we've got a line item for the FY twenty-one, twenty-two step increase for certified employees. So teachers will be getting a step in the next thirty days increase, and they'll get another step July one. And, and many, as we've talked about this, it's been Richland Two's tradition that when certified teachers get an increase or a step, we've done everything possible, if budget allows, to provide that to all employees, whether they're teachers or not, and we've included those in the line items as well. Teachers will get mandated by the state government. Teachers will be getting a thousand dollar increase in the salary schedule. So every teacher will get a thousand dollar raise. That's in addition to the two steps that they will be getting. One step next, in the next thirty days, another step in July, one, and then a thousand dollar raise on top of that. As I said, most of this is employee compensation-driven, and those are the primary, uh, those are the primary ways that we're compensating and spending those funds. We've got two cost decreases, basis, basically elimination, elimination of expenditures that we're building into the budget. One is we've had a recurring reduction in our utility bill. We're very efficient. We've made some efficiency gains and investments, and our, and our utility bills have gone down. And we're estimating that'll be seven hundred thousand dollars savings. And then, you know, as you know, the charter school has made, has, they are dissolving. And they are, will be dissolving as of July, June thirtieth. And we, last year, we spent eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, sent it to the charter school for their operations. So without their operating, we'll have eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars to spend. And so in the last three things, we've got the fourth line down, and I apologize, I, I should have numbered these line items. I will make sure I do that next time, but it's easier to follow. But the problem with us doing this is we get so involved, it's all natural to us, but I- But the problem with us doing this is we get so involved, it's all natural to us, but I apologize. But the fourth line from the bottom, this is a proposal that you, that, that we talked about the last time. I know the board's talked about it as a, as a priority, again, it's compensation. And I know Dr. Davis has been very adamant about trying to do this, is to raise the starting teacher salary in Richland two to forty one thousand dollars. It's now about thirty, it's less than thirty eight thousand dollars today. Uh, if we raise it up to forty one thousand, that will, uh, estimated cost of a little bit over a million dollars. And we feel like that will be help us with, again, some of your priorities, employee compensation and employee retention and recruitment. We feel all those things will be, will help with those, with those priorities. Couple of minor little things, minor, I apologize. Two hundred forty thousand dollars is not minor, when you talk about three hundred million dollars, it, it, I apologize for my language, but uh, we have an increase in some of our annual operating contracts, that's with our SEDEXO and our environmental ag, uh, those types of contracts that we have for, for property maintenance, things like that, of about two hundred forty thousand dollars. We know that the SRO contract with the sheriff, uh, is, we're anticipating that increase to be passed on to us again. So we've built in an increase for the sheriff's office. Uh, and then, again, com, employee compensation and retention and recruitment for bus drivers. We are still having trouble with bus drivers. They, as you know, they're heroes now, they have been for a long time, they've just now recently been recognized as heroes. But we want to provide a better incentive program to, again, attract and recruit and maintain and retain those bus drivers. With that, I'll, I'll stop there. The rest of this is our calculations based on the millage rate and the analysis that we do for the county, uh, county auditor. But I'll be glad to answer any questions. I feel like I've been talking for a long time and you're probably ready for me to leave. But I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair.
More members, this, this. Mackey first, and then Dr. Scott.
Okay. Dr. Miley, I've, I wanted to, um, you made a comment about this not being a premier situation. This has not been a, this, this year has not been standard, this year, the pandemic itself was not premier. So the fact that you all have kept this rolling and kept it abreast, um, and I know that the, the budget is complex. You are a senior financial advisor with a doctorate degree in that area, and you are still, um, working through this process. So I know that line items change, I know that pots of money change, and I want to thank you for making, um, difficult situations possible, Dr. Davis. I thank you for answering my questions, I've had, I've asked you some questions before, before the meeting, and I appreciate that. Um, but thank you all for being accessible and just providing us the information that we have. Your, your gesture of raising teacher salary, Dr. Davis, is to be commended. We appreciate that, and so many other initiatives that have gone into this. I know this is not just your job, Dr. Miley, a lot of people. A lot of hands are at play in this process, and I just want to say that I understand how complex it is. And especially when the legislature changes, um, the game at the last minute, and then does it again, and then does it again, and then does it again, and this year, in, in particular, because of the pandemic, a lot of things changed, there were a lot of moving parts. So, uh, to be able to be proficient at what you've done in spite of all of that, I appreciate you, I appreciate your staff. I appreciate the people who comprise these line items, um, for helping us to stay afloat, because the main thing this year was making sure that we, um, kept people safe while trying to educate them, and I just didn't want that to go unnoticed, so, unsaid rather, so thank you so much.
Well, as, as you know, I'm, I'm just the pretty talking head.
Absolutely.
The one who does all the hard work.
You remind us of that, you do. Thank you, Dr. Miley.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Miley, pretty is a relative term. Thank you. Dr. Scott.
Dr. Miley, you mentioned the millage cap or rate? What is the rate that we are asking for?
We are asking, and this budget includes a zero mill increase.
Zero mill increase?
No mill increase.
That's awesome.
And that's a strong recommendation from our team to Dr. Davis. We, we know that we can always use additional funding. Last year, the county asked all state, all their agencies to cut their budget, we did not, we kept a zero millage. And given our community having gone through the pandemic and everything, the hard times people have had, we felt like if we can build a budget on a zero mill increase, that's what we're recommending.
Okay. You touched on a few of my questions that I have here that I did not send in earlier, so I'm going to ask them now. You touched on a decrease in the utility budget of seven hundred thousand, the decrease in expansion, um, the charter school of eight hundred ninety five thousand, which actually leaves one million five hundred ninety five dollars. If you are Dr. Davis, have you guys decided how this money can be used? Or can you use that money on something totally different?
Actually, what we've done is we've included in this line item and we've, we've subtracted it from those expenditures, and that's the way we're able to fund all the things on that page.
Okay.
So we've incorporated those cuts and said, okay, we've cut here, and now we can add other things like the forty one thousand dollar starting salary.
Okay, so you've already allocated the money to a different line item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I would like to see that in the future, um, Dr. Davis, that if we do allocate money from a different line item that we know that, because that could have eliminated this question as well. And the next question is, we have an increase in SRO contracts, not against you, Mr. Tim back there, Mr. Ford. But my question would be, um, each year, I notice that it's always an increase. And it goes up even more, and I know it costs a lot to make sure that our community and our students and employees are safe. Is there any rationale between why it's gone up eighty seven thousand dollars this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's the increase they la, asked for last year, and we didn't pay it.
Okay.
We didn't sign a contract with the sheriff's office last year when they asked for that amount. And we've been operating both under good faith for the last year, so we're anticipating them asking for that.
Okay.
This year.
Absolutely.
That's spread over two years, while it's a lot, that's, we know their costs are going up as well, so we, it may be less than that, it may be more than that, but we, that's what we're.
Okay, so we're just.
Planning on it.
Planning on it, okay. And my last question is, I'm glad to see this line item for bus driver retention, recruitment and incentive. It's three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. What does that consist of? Um, bonuses or?
Bonuses, retention, uh, driver referrals, that is, if a driver says, oh,
Training.
I want to bring somebody in to become a driver, if that driver passes the test, they get a bonus, those types of things, yes, ma'am. Retention, like annual, so if you've been here five years, you would get X amount of money. If you've been here ten years, you get X amount of money, yes, ma'am.
I'm glad to see that. Thank you, those are all the questions that I have.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, other board members, Ms. Augustine?
Thank you, and mine, my question is, I've got regarding the bus driver retention and recruiting also. I'm glad to see all of that, but what about, um, just a pay increase in general? I mean, they'll get their step or whatever they get, but.
If all employees will get a step increase.
Right.
Okay, if they're eligible for a step increase. The bus drivers, I can't remember, I apologize, I can't remember whether bus drivers are on a salary schedule or whether they're, I think they are, so they would get a step increase. If, if not, they would get two percent, they would get a two percent raise in lieu of a salary step increase. So they would, they would get two percent of this.
I, I guess my question here is, are we not considering giving the bus drivers anymore? I mean, we read the in-district transfers and releases and the hires, and it just seems to me like they're such high turnover, and one of the things that I keep repeatedly hearing is they get trained here, and then they go off in six months and get a job someplace else. What else can we do, not just with the incentives?
We already have one incentive program for them. It was similar to our perfect attendance and, and they, we implemented several years ago, in which they get a hundred dollars a month uh, extra if they're perfect attendants and don't have a rec. Uh, so we put that in place, so they have that in as an incentive. State law, the budget right now, the Senate version of state law is mandating a two percent increase for bus driver salaries. So given our other programs, and we've given bus drivers several different salaries increases, I can't speak to it, I think Will Anderson can. Our bus driver salaries are some of the highest in the state right this minute. But again, we feel like it's still difficult to recruit and retain them, so we want to do more. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, that's accurate, they, they are, uh, through the salary studies that, uh, Ms. Williams and her staff do, uh, we have, uh, first or second highest in the state on an hourly, hourly rate. Uh, we have looked at perhaps doing the salary schedule differently. Um, uh, but this incentive and, and bonus structure does allow for some, kind of like our bonus that we were, that you were fortunate to give us uh, all staff last year. It puts in some, some significant one-time money into their pockets as a way of thanking them for, for continuing their work. Uh, at this point, uh, we didn't see, uh, changing the entire salary schedule based on it. It, it is the highest in alignment with, with the standards for what, uh, that the classification of employees should be paid.
So we feel that we are adequately paying our bus drivers.
I'd say we're paying them better than any other district in the state. Um, this is a, a major issue, we, we want to, I, should we pay them more? Uh, I think a lot of people would say they always would get it paid more, but I think this incentive plan, uh, will allow people when they chasing a job for a quarter more, um, I, I, that's a great question. I mean, I, I think personally that we pay them very well for, 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 for what they do and hopefully can continue to look at paying them more through this incentive plan and maybe other options down the road.
All right, thank you, and I have one more question, and I think you.
Ms. Augustine, hold on a second, Dr. Did you want to speak to the bus driver issue?
I, I do want to just address the bus driver issue.
Is that okay if he does that, and then we come back, Ms. Augustine?
Sure.
I just want to, I think it's important for us, uh, and I, I appreciate the team and, and the, the team's, uh, recommendation, and we had an opportunity to discuss this incentive package for our bus driver at, at great length, and um, we are making some steps to, um, work really hard to recruit, retain these bus drivers with this incentive plan. I just want to just remind just everyone that we also have other employees that we also have to take in consideration as well throughout the district as we continue to look at our salaries and to make sure that our salaries are competitive across the board. And so that we may want to do more for one segment of our school district, we have to also keep in mind that we are juggling multiple divisions and multiple, um, um, staff members that we have to continuously look at to make sure that we're being competitive. So I would say that, well, to answer the question of do we feel that we're paying them adequately, I will say that we are paying them competitively. Um, adequate is something that can be, is, is, you know, can depend on what the person's definition of adequate or their standard for adequate would be. South Carolina has been battling minimally adequate that terminology for years now, what is adequate? But we can say we're paying our bus drivers competitively across, compared to other school districts across the state. We're saying that we're making an effort to pay our teachers competitively, starting pay of across, across the Midlands and across the state. And then there are other areas that we have to continuously look at. So we're just bringing to you all tonight a kind of a preliminary budget and where we are. If there are priorities, we're going to have an opportunity for a, um, budget workshop and put on the table all of those additional things and discussions that we may want to add. And then the, we can make a decision on whether or not we're going to be able to fund those things with this budget, and will it require us to ask for additional millage increase or so on and so forth? But we want to give this information to you all to see, this is where we are without asking for any additional funding. These are the things that are, that are priorities and things that we think that we can do, um, and we will address those other things in future budgets as well.
Thank you, Ms. Augustine.
Thank you, and I, and I do appreciate Dr. Davis's comments that, you know, we've got more than just bus drivers or teachers, but the bus drivers seem to be the one that I see repeatedly on the, uh, release list and high turnover. Um, and my last question is, um, and I think you may have talked about this, but for the teachers, teacher salary schedule entry level increase to forty one thousand dollars, all of the teachers then, the whole schedule will shift up then?
Not the whole, not the whole schedule. Uh, this is primarily focused on the, uh, the, the ones with the BA and the BA plus eighteen, I believe is the terminology. Those two salary components, salary schedule components, and affect probably about, um, maybe twenty-ish steps in that, in that matrix.
I'm not quite sure that I follow that.
I think I can answer that.
Can you make it more basic?
Dr. Davis.
We did a study of our salaries, and we found that we were less competitive in the early stages of teachers' careers in our school district. So first-year, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth-year teachers and so on. When you compare our teachers' pay compared to the Midlands, around the Midlands and even the state, we were not as competitive. So we wanted to put a process in place or address that, um, salary increase for those students, so, I mean, those teachers, I'm sorry. So what you will see is, as we make the adjustment to the starting salary, the ripple effect goes to about year fifteen or year twenty, not year thirty or year, uh, because we do pay our teachers on a pace. Our teacher's scale goes beyond the required state teacher scale. So teacher up to about the year fifteen, sixteen, seventeen or so, we'll see an increase from the initial bump in the starting salary for a first-year teacher. We've also found that when you look at, say, first-year teachers at the doctoral level, they are competitive. We are competitive in that area, where we were lacking and falling behind was a first-year teacher, zero experience with a bachelor's. First-year teacher or second-year teacher, two years' experience with a master's. We were not as competitive in the Midlands as other school districts were, so we wanted to address that. Could not address the entire salary scale, so say a person with a doctorate in thirty-five years will not see any increase in their salary as a result of the teacher salary scale being changed. Where they'll see their increase isn't, is when we're increasing each, uh, the step increase, um, for, uh, each, uh, each scale or each sale, um, and then the overall general, um, I think one thousand dollar raise if that's, if that's approved.
All right, understood, thank you.
All right, other board members, questions or comments? Ms. McFadden?
I have one, um, yes, I would just like to say, Dr. Miley, um, gave us this book, um, not too long ago. And as a matter of fact, as we were talking and we had some issues, I was able to find three twenty-eight. It's a sub fund under the EIA, which is the Economic Impact Aid, and it is for CATE scholarships. And I was just able just to quickly look it up, the number in here, and then go to Google real quick, and it pops up really quick. And it tells you the information, so a lot of times, you know, it gets frustrating, um, Dr. Scott, when you're hollering and screaming, and I'm not taking any offense, but it does get kind of hyper in here. And it only took me the, about the amount of time that you were fussing to find it. And I'm just saying that I think it could be productive, you know, if you did allow them a little bit of time to come up with it. It doesn't take that much time, but if they don't know, then they don't know until we get in here, and then we're on a crunch time. Now, I appreciate your concern because I didn't know either, but we were given a book that we could address this and look at it. And it is kind of unfair for them to get up here and have fifty questions thrown at them, and it's like, okay, let me jump here, let me jump there. And if we can just, you know, just work together and not get hyper and ask our questions, maybe ahead of time, and also get someone in here, maybe, um, that is salary, you know, that maybe doesn't, you know, can adjust their schedule, that might be helpful. You know, I'm just saying that because I don't like sitting in the board meeting when people are watching and we're hollering back and forth, the gavel has to go. It's not a good look, you know, and so I just wanted to address that, it was quick, it is a CATE fund. Um, if you go on your book on page ninety-six, you'll see it, and if you go online, it started in April, I mean, nineteen eighty-four. It's not that hard, you know, so I think we can be progressive if we just work together, and that's what I'm saying.
And Ms. McFadden, I want to say thank you for your comment. I really appreciate that, thank you so much for your comment. However, I understand there is a book, but when we're presenting this, our constituents do not see a book unless you're willing to go and meet with each of them and share your book with them. Therefore, when we ask questions, we're asking for clarification, and I really don't see anything wrong with that. So that's your style of how you're going to do your delivery, and I will respect that and respect my style, thank you.
Ms. Mackey?
Disregard, disregard my comment at this point, we're laboring the point, I'll disregard it.
Thank you. Other comments?
Um, Dr. Scott.
Ms. McFadden?
Um, if constituents want to know, they have an opportunity at the budget, budget to come, we've had two of them. I haven't heard any, I haven't got, got any information about it. And I don't know if it's the constituents that are asking or if it's just you that are asking. And if your constituents are asking, there are constituents as well, and so we would not like to know that, what questions are they getting asked? So that we can also be prepared. And I understand we do have different styles, but I'm thinking of the style of getting hyper in the room and having the gavel. We've got to bring it down so that we can get through things, we're having to spend time dealing with this because I'm over here halfway flustered and stressed because we're getting flustered and stressed, we don't need that. And I'm just saying, I think it would be, you know, conducive and conducive if we give these to them quicker, you know? It's not hard, it's not, it didn't take me any time to do it, you know? And that's my piece about it. And that's my piece about it.
Thank you. Dr. Scott, we're, we're going to move on here.
We are, but I just want to say again, thank you, Ms. McFadden. But once again, you do what makes you feel comfortable. And I will continue to do the ways that I feel that makes me feel comfortable. And again, we're all board members. We all been elected. So I don't think any one of these board members here have the right to tell anyone how to conduct themselves. Thank you very much.
Dr. Miley, um, on this budget, we have up to a seven, the potential for a seven mil increase, correct?
Correct.
With our allotment?
Correct.
And I like to look at that as a cost of living adjustment. The state legislature does not allow us to unilaterally increase taxes, but based off the growth of our population and the growth of, uh, of inflation to, in order to keep up with inflation, they allow us up to seven mils to keep up with that, correct?
Act 388 mileage cap applied this year with the growth and inflation estimates. It's limit, would limit us to a seven mil cap.
Correct. So, um, you presented us a zero mil budget, um, which I certainly applaud, uh, all of the line items. I think they're all critical. They're in line with the board's request, um, and certainly with staff requests. And, and pretty much all the surveys that were done, they align nicely with that. Um, with, uh, of course, our biggest investment being in personnel and, and quality staff. But I would like to see in the past, we've seen, um, sort of a, a graduated budget up to the cap so that we can see what the additional line items were that sort of didn't make the cut in the zero mil budget. And, um, I, I'd like for us at, uh, if it's at the budget workshop or the next opportunity to be presented with that graduated budget, so we can see what those additional line items are.
We'll be glad to do that. Um, we, we probably could identify $30 million worth of needs. Uh, you know, the district, we do that routinely, uh, the needs of, of the district every year. Um, and we can put that together. We can either do it for that tentatively scheduled July 17th, uh, work session, if that works for the board. We can do it at another time at your, at your, whatever's convenient for the board. We would need, uh, we would like maybe a week or so to work on that, uh, or more. But if whatever, well, the board, if we would, if you want a workshop, we have one scheduled. If you want a separate one or a s- a second one, we can do that to go through that.
I, I think, i- unless somebody were to say otherwise, the budget workshop would be-
We still will not have a state budget by that time. So it's still, I mean, that won't be too late, um, in terms of our discussion. So I think we can do that.
Okay, yeah, certainly understanding that that's, all of this is up in the air until that's decided. Ms. Mackey, you have additional comments?
Uh, to, to, with regard to the bus drivers, I can remember when I was on, when I, when I got on the board seven years ago and there were bus drivers who had concerns. There was, there's been, um, I think an issue with bus driver retention for as long as there's been an issue with teacher retention. This is not an issue that is exclusive to Richland 2. What I do know is that Richland 2 has heard. There is no perfect situation, no perfect scenario, but, but I do know that Richland 2 has listened and tried to put systems in place to incentivize our bus drivers and other pockets of populations as well. There are school districts that don't, that don't have incentives in place and don't have competitive salaries. And I'm not trying. So I wanted to commend the district for at least trying to do so, something to address the issue at hand. And this is not just this year, but this has been ongoing for quite a number of years now. Thank you.
And it's a moving target. Whatever we do, it keeps moving.
It is indeed. Thank you, Dr. McFadden.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, I took so long tonight.
Uh, no, no apologies. There, there was a lot there. Um, thank you for, therefore, I know this is a huge undertaking, not only to keep up with the current budget, but at the same time process the new budget with, uh, an ever-moving needle, uh, from the legislature.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Davis, item 8.4, report on mental health.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, and Mr. of the Board, and to our viewing community, we are going to provide you all with a report on mental health and wellness in Richland School District 2. And to provide us with this information, we have our Executive Director for Learning Support Services, Dr. Shirley Vickery. Dr. Vickery?
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Make sure I got my bearings here. I really appreciate you giving me some time to talk about this. This is an issue that's near and dear to my heart and it's meant a lot to people across the country this year too. So, um, I am the Executive Director of Learning Support Services. Learning Support Services, we also call LSS. LSS is in Richland 2, those traditional helping professionals, school counselors, psychologists, nurses, uh, social workers, family intervention services and our homebound team. So if I use that acronym throughout this discussion, then you'll remember that LSS means all those helping professionals. And that leadership team helped me put this presentation to, together tonight. But all of us in Richland 2, every person have a role in making sure that we address mental health needs of our community. So what does mental health mean in a school district? When we talk about mental health, what are we really talking about in a school district? And I think it really means we're talking about the needs of adults and children. When we talk about things that need to happen in a school district, we really look at the relationship between adults and children. We look at how we can set adults up to do their best work with children. And so the needs of adults are important. We also talk about this from a prevention kind of way. We're not talking about pathology. We're not talking about illness. We're really talking about building up skills in students and adults so that we can prevent problems that might occur. We also talk about the importance of well-being and how important it is for each of us to bring well-being to our work. And we talk about school culture. School culture plays such an important part in developing mental well-being among students and staff. So that's the kind of stuff we're going to talk about. What do we know about student wellness this year? Well, if you listen to the news like I do, you know, everybody's been talking about how many issues there have been in student wellness. The national data shows us that students are reporting more difficulties with mental well-being. We've seen that on the local level too. We've been worried about our kids and their engagement. We've worried especially about our students who've been fully virtual this year and our ability to connect with them. Our parents have worried about that. Our teachers have worried about whether they were going to be able to, uh, connect with students who were only virtual. We have some students that we know from the very beginning are more vulnerable to mental health, difficulties to stressors. Adolescents in general tend to be the most vulnerable kids we have. And that's because they're frequently torn to other things. They really are interested in social activities. Sometimes they have jobs and it's tough for them to stay on track, especially during something like a pandemic. But stu-, are students with disabilities, and this includes students with milder disabilities, who have some learning weaknesses that cause them to struggle with academics. Those students often have trouble keeping feeling good, continuing to feel good about themselves as they're learning. We know too that social media and exposure to media about COVID-19 has been a known stressor and other family stressors like financial hardships. What about adult wellness this year? Well, you know, all of us, whether we admit it or not, have struggled this year with the pandemic. People report weight gain, people report increased alcohol use. Some parents have talked about work, parenting boundaries, and how do we match those two things together? This has been a year when people have seen stressors that they're really not used to coping with. In our own community, we've had troubles that people were concerned about coming back to school. Was it going to be safe to be back in school? About racial injustice and the issues that have been happening in our country that bring out feelings of, um, discomfort in those issues. We've also missed face-to-face connections with people. And we know that these things impact students. How do these things impact students? How is it going to impact our instruction? What about our relationships with kids? How are we as adults going to make those things work? So what have we done for people this year as we've been coping with the pandemic and coping with these additional stressors and mental health? When we talk about mental health, we can't divorce that from physical health because physical health is extremely connected to mental health. And obviously, the biggest challenge in physical health this year has been COVID-19. And although a lot of departments have really worked this year to address needs in COVID-19, it's really been our nursing department that's put the most energy into this. Early on, our nurses started setting up contact tracing procedures where they paid a lot of attention to individuals, students, staff, all of us got information from nurses. They also did educational things that gave people more confidence in their ability to respond to COVID-19. Then when we learned there were vaccines coming, we did vaccine education. And ultimately, we delivered a vaccine clinic, which was extremely powerful. These things were all done, not just for physical well-being, but to give our employees comfort and the knowledge that they had skills they could use to cope with what was going on. That increases mental well-being and that's what we were really trying to do. What else have we done for adults this year? Well, our first efforts toward working with adults happened last summer when we were really in a stressful situation. The pandemic was just starting. We had these racial injustice things happening around the country. And so the LSS leadership team worked with administration to set up a series of debriefings. We started debriefing with administrators in the summer. Then we debriefed with all of our LSS teams and ultimately trained enough people to debrief with every teacher in the, in the district. That meant everybody had a chance to know this was a safe place to talk about difficult topics. You could ask questions and you could have your questions answered. That really increases people's, people's sense of comfort in their workplace. You can see a bunch of these other things. We've worked on self-care of teachers. Some of our schools had yoga in the parking lot. We had people come into schools who did self-care exercises. We started a wellness site that really is for families, students and teachers. It's going to be available in Spanish very soon. We're pretty excited about that. Teacher and school training went on all year. We did additional training with our Learning Support Services staff members, especially in virtual things. How do you work with students virtually? How do you make this work? We had our community site visits back in the fall. We saw over 2,000 students and usually their families face-to-face in those things. We've continued our community outreach and our parent support. And especially continuing to increase the number of home visits we made during this time. So what about students? What have we done for students? A student wellness this year has been a match student needs to your intervention and what you're doing. And that really is the way it works every time. A lot of the things that we've done with students have been things that we've done every year with students. But there had to be some tweaking for those things to make them work this year. Counseling was available virtually as well as face-to-face. We had to work on certain specific sets of resources and getting people things that they need, including internet access and making sure that families had good enough access if they were doing virtual instruction to make that work. Physical health, again, an important part of supporting students this year. And academic needs. This is really such a big part of students' feeling of wellness in a school because that's what we work on, isn't it? We work on making sure that academic needs are addressed. So our LSS teams work closely with school administrators, with special education teams, with lots of folks in seeing how we help students address their academic needs. Sometimes these things that we deliver to everybody are really not enough. And we have to dig deeper and, and do more kinds of interventions. We have set up for the last several years, a very, uh, strong suicide risk assessment protocol using the Columbia Risk Assessment Tool, which is a, a tool recommended nationally. And we have, um, very significant follow-up procedures on, using that tool. We use the State's Behavior Threat Assessment Process, which is when students, um, either have threatening behavior or make threats toward the school. And we have, I'm a, a state trainer in that system, so we use that protocol within our district. We have our Family Intervention Services. I'll talk about them in just a minute, where we actually have seven licensed therapists working for us. Two of them are native Spanish speakers, which is amazing. And in that group, we also have 15 to 20 graduate interns. They, um, pivoted very quickly to using telehealth when the pandemic started and have continued to do some telehealth this year. We have school-based mental health counselors. I'll talk about them in just a minute. And then our community connections. We use our community connections to enhance the kind of services that we offer when people need more. I just have to say a few words about Family Intervention Services. Some of you are pretty familiar with that. Um, those seven mental health licensed therapists who work with families and students, if they have a school problem and they're referred by either an administrator or an LSS staff person, it's not really open to the entire community if you don't have school problems. This is really focused on working with folks who are somehow struggling in school. And of that group, you can see how it broke out, the kinds of referrals they got. They offered 5,000 appointments this year, which is a really, a number I think to be very proud of. We did see there were a lot of increased stressors among families. We actually had to put an additional, we see lots of folks in the evenings after work. We had to put an additional crisis person at that site for a good bit of the spring this year to address needs like, um, folks who were, were tending to want to harm themselves. I love this quote from a parent. She said, FIS, that's what we call it, improved our family dynamics with communication. My son used to get so angry, but now instead of going into rage, he'll sit down and calmly talk about it. And that's an actual parent quote. So we're pretty pleased about how that's, how effective that service is. Our school-based mental health counselors are employees of the Columbia Area Mental Health Center. These are not Richland 2 employees, although we do put in a little money toward their salaries. Their offices are based in the schools and they actually will see families and students in the school. They also have access to psychiatric services. And those are located not in our school. They have to go to the center to see a psychiatrist. But this is a different kind of service from Family Intervention Services. So where are we going? What are the important things that we think need to happen in the future? And really, we identified four big things that we think need to be worked on immediately coming out of the pandemic. One is social emotional wellness. And we're talking here about really working from a developmental perspective, understanding student needs. What does a kindergartner need to learn next? What does a 10th grader need to learn next? How do we all support that kind of approach? And use school climate to make sure that we're supporting those things. This is an intentional look at individual inter- interventions as well as the things we connect with classrooms. We're going to, um, strengthen our community partnerships, especially in the mental health area. We are, uh, we work constantly at enhancing our relationship with the Columbia Area Mental Health Center, making sure they get good referrals and that we work with them on hiring new counselors. But we're also going to, uh, do an educational series for local physicians and healthcare providers to make sure that the needs of students that they see in their offices are connecting to us and that we get an opportunity to address their needs in school as well. We're going to look at understanding student needs even more than we have in the past. We've been using Bright Bites, which is a data analytic tool that combines various pieces of information we have about students. For the first time this fall, we're going to be combining that information with the results of this individual student survey, which kids complete themselves. And in that survey, they'll tell us how they perceive their school, how they perceive their own needs and how they're feeling about themselves and their social relationships and so forth. But we're also going to be going back to supporting adults. And one of the big things that I think, as we prepare to go back to face-to-face learning, is this whole notion of realistic optimism. Knowing that we can tackle problems, they're going to be out there. We know they're out there, but we can tackle them if we all work together and do the, the things we know are right. I think this is a slide I was actually supposed to hit earlier. This is just a series of photographs from our community sites. If you can enjoy those. Well, if anybody has questions, that's really the end of this presentation.
Board members, questions with Mackey?
Dr. Vickery, I, Dr. Vickery have way more to say than there is time to, to say it. Um, in the midst of this, this is important at any time. We, we talk about, you know, financial, you know, health, physical health, you know, emotion. Mental health is so important in the midst of this pandemic. Um, that's one of the main things. I talk about keeping the main thing, the main thing. Um, while we were struggling to educate children safely and for teachers to be comfortable safely, um, parents were going through some stuff, you know, community was going through things. So the initiative that, that you've described here, I just, you know, there's not enough to say about it, not enough time to say it. But thank you for sharing simply a snapshot of what you've done and what you're trying to do, uh, to address mental health, which is an underserved service period. which is an underserved service period in this country. So thank you for sharing with us. I absolutely appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Mackie.
Thank you.
It's important work.
Dr. Scott?
Dr. Vickery, I just want to say thank you. I've worked with you for many, many years. You've always been great. Thank you for your consistency. Thank you for always being ahead of changes. And thank you for giving your best to Richland School District, too. I love your leadership. I love what you've done for our students, our employees, our parents, and our community. So continue the excellent work and just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Scott. I appreciate that. It's been a wonderful place to work.
Other board members?
I want to echo also, thank you for all the work that you and, I mean, many people that are involved. I think it's incredible when we look at over 400-plus suicide assessments. I mean, that's just an incredible number, and we know that's probably just the tip of the iceberg of what's really out there with that issue. Over 5,000 appointments. I mean, that's just incredible when you look at the amount of work that goes into what you all do. And certainly appreciate the note of positivity that we can continue to improve and work on this. And I believe that this is an area where I've seen the most change in the school system since I've been on the board is in the area of the social emotional wellness of our students. And not that we didn't do things before, but we've seen just a tremendous increase in focus on that. And of course, that doesn't even begin to address all the issues you talked about with our staff and the issues they've been through this year and the pressures. So there's a lot there. But I appreciate Dr. Vickery, your staff, Dr. Davis, the continued effort and focus, as well as the board. I know for all of us, this is a priority, and so I appreciate everything that's gone into it.
We really appreciate your prioritizing this, too. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I just want to say, just to echo, that's a great point to wrap that up. I want the board to remember, you made this a priority. The social emotional wellness of our schools. So what you see is a result of the priority that you asked administration to focus on. And so this concert of individuals who work in the school district to focus on the mental and emotional wellness of our students is evident in our approach to try to create spaces where our students feel safe and secure before we can even provide them with educational experiences. So thank you, Dr. Vickery.
You're sure right. Thank you to every one of you for your work on this.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Davis, we have an update on capital improvements.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair members of the board. Will Anderson, our chief operational logistics, will come before us this evening to share briefly information regarding our update on capital improvement projects here in our school district for the May 25th board meeting. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Good evening, everyone. Interesting to follow Dr. Vickery as we, in our aspect of facilities, I'm glad she mentioned that, that we do try to provide safe, secure facilities for the whole child and providing in our design strategies and the things we do now to look after the mental health through different things that you'll see in our new facilities and see as our renovation projects. Those sometimes subtle things that really do try to pay attention to the mental health of everyone in our building. So I'm happy to follow Dr. Vickery in that regards. I'll quickly go through some of these. Some of this is repeat information, but just a reminder to the public where we stand right now with the 38 bond projects complete. We have nine under construction, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about those nine here soon. We have five pond projects in design. I'll give a little brief update on those. And then Phase Two of our bond projects. As a reminder, we will, in the late summer, early fall, we issue another RFP for those 23 projects for the architectural services. And then we'll have a CM@Risk RFP shortly thereafter with anticipation of starting those 23 projects for design phase in January of 2022 or early of 2022. We've also finished, currently, all of our facilities are getting new cameras and door access. Eight facilities are complete through that project right now. And as mentioned before, 23 of our 25 buses have been purchased. So real quickly, Bethel Hambury is coming along fantastic. You can see, there's recent pictures of roof on. You can see as we move around the building. So just some quick updates. They're kind of basically moving around the front. If you can follow my cursor and then working around. So like in this front part here, we've already got CMU wall. We're starting to get metal studs up. So we are actually making very good progress. Actually, tomorrow, we're having a topping off ceremony at the school. We'll be putting our last beam on the top of the building. So it's very exciting, the progress they're making at Bethel Hambury. And then just real quick, every student in the school has signed that beam. And so the beam, of course, will be part of the school for the students of that school that signed it. So it's kind of a neat ceremony tomorrow. E.L. Wright and C.F.K., we're actually moving out of the ground now. Sounds great. You can, these pictures are a couple of weeks or a week or two dated, but you can see we're three stories up with steel coming up in the new building at E.L. Wright. So once the steel starts going up, we start moving a lot quicker once we get out of the ground. You can see how we tore down in this photo the 600 building. This was a week before. Now the car's cut through here to give us a little bit more room to build because of tight site. And then coming next year, this road will be incomplete. We will not be using that anymore. And you can see the back here where the new drive will be. And so it'll be an interesting construction site. Forest Lake, again, coming out of the ground. The footings have been poured, so we'll be starting seeing structural steel at Forest Lake probably end of this week, first of next week. Stadium in Northeast, really close. We've got OSF final inspection first week of June, which is next week. Yep, next week. So we have that next week, and that's for the buildings. The turf, you can see, is starting to come down. That's the, all the, actually, the new picture this week is the green turf is coming down with the track to be done by July 17th. So we're excited about the R and E stadium. The roofing project and the renovations, they thought this was a good image to show where are we at in the new roof and what the picture of the old roof and HVAC. So you can kind of get an idea, new roof with new HVAC, old roof, old HVAC. So it's pretty clear that we needed some new roofing there at Ridgefield Northeast. The interior renovations have not started. We continue to work through budgets and work through timeline to make sure we can do these interior renovations while the school is in session. Ridgeview High Stadium, it's a June 17th OSF inspection. So we're finishing some interiors in the press box, the fieldhouse, finishing in some of the front space and some of the small minor site work. Really amazing stuff when you go over there. Just really, these things have transformed our schools. And it's just so exciting for our athletes and our students to be able to use these facilities. And these are the interior renovations. So if you're familiar with Ridgeview, it's hard to see, but the HVA unit used to be under the window. It's now a unit that's a standing unit that connects into the ceiling that pumps air into the hallway. So that's what that kind of system looks like. And then you can see the auditorium addition and renovation here at Ridgeview, along with other interior renovations. That's ahead of schedule, hoping to be done out of there by the end of August, which was supposed to be January of 2022. So we're doing real well at Ridgeview. Blythewood High School, this is the fifth house. We do have some concerns with completing on time. Right now, we are at July 23rd. I was, I met with the furnisher team in Blythewood today, the contractors. I'm meeting with them again on Thursday. We're really making sure that not only do we stay on time, but we are having the premier craftsmanship and the work that we want. So we're not taking any shortcuts to get on time, because at the end of the day, we're stuck with this building. But we do want to make sure that we finish on time. We're working with the school. We fortunately do have portables and things in place so that if we are delayed, it shouldn't be a major impact to the school. But I just want to go ahead and brief you all right now where we're on that, and we'll continue to brief you the next couple of meetings on the progress of where we're at in Blythewood High School. And if anything should come up, of course, you all will be made aware. Design projects, we met yesterday about interiors coming along great with forming arts, looking for a winter construction, summer construction on Lot Langford and Cantaba. And we're still getting design scope work back from Conder and Killes. Dr. Miley pretty much went over this in his quarterly report for where we are to date on our expenditures. Just some other notes I do want you to be aware of. And I've mentioned this before, we are seeing some pretty substantial increases in our metals, woods, and other equipment costs. Fortunately, with a CM@Risk contract, which a lot of these major construction projects are on their way, we are locked into the price. And we do have a contingency, or I should say, the contractor has a contingency. And so that's built in for them to pay for those rising costs. We will see that potentially in future projects, but we feel like we're making great progress right now. Now, I say we may see that in future progress because the market's still very volatile. It's not settled out as the prices will be here. It's still very volatile. Labor is still strong. Some of the subcontractors are having some turnover, but it's not impacted our site. For example, when I was at Bethel Hambury, they had close to 40 Masons on that site, which is the largest number of Masons I've seen on a site before. So that's very positive. And timeline, other than Blythewood High School, as mentioned, everything's on schedule. Our future projects may have an increase in time that have not officially started yet. For example, a joist, which is part of the steel package. If we ordered that today, they said it would be here in February. And so there are some issues that are coming up with some timeline that may have to do that. And of course, as mentioned earlier, we're monitoring those cost increases and making sure we are staying within our budget. As a reminder, always, all this information is on our website, and we'll continue to do that and do these monthly updates and answer any questions you have. Mr. Chair, Dr. Davis, thank you.
Ms. Mackie.
Mr. Anderson, thanks for the information. And I just wanted to appreciate the fact that you gave us nine reports detached. We have nine attachments with regard to updates in each school and each facility. And I've had a chance to go through those and ask questions when I had concerns. I just want to say that I'm excited. I can remember being on the other side of some of these improvements when I was on, you know, School Improvement Council. You know, my kids were in high school, and I can remember when some of these things were a dream, some of the things that we wanted to do. So it's exciting to see things come to fruition. I know that we worked very hard. The district worked very hard. The community worked very hard to pass the bond referendum. And there are lots of things that we had on paper. To see those things coming to fruition is just simply exciting. And I'm sure that there are kinks that'll be worked out, but it's just exciting to see the things that we've dreamed about and worked for so long, for so hard, come to fruition. So just to all involved, thank you, and to our community who supported the bond referendum and the people who are making it happen. Thank you, Dr. Davis and Mr. Anderson and lots of other people. Bless you for that.
Other board members, questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini.
Thank you. I'm wondering if with the inflation and supply chain issues, are we planning to put anything on hold or delay for the Phase Two part of the project?
At this point, we're not. Our cash flow and budgets are still okay. They're not at a point that we feel like we need to wait. We're still planning on pushing forward. If for some reason we need to delay, we'll, of course, let you all know and make that decision. But right now, we're monitoring and we'll continue to monitor, but we're not at a point to recommend delaying those future projects right now.
Okay. And we've talked in the past about the buses. And to me, as I have understood it, the 25 buses that we've used, we use them sporadically based on need because of, one, bus drivers, but, two, paying for the maintenance and the fuel. Do we actually need the two buses that we have not purchased?
Yes. I mean, we still have activity buses that are not yellow. They're still got the older colors. Those buses are, get old. They're 20 years, two of them are, I think, 20 years old. So we'll rotate those off with these new buses, and they'll be yellow so that we could use those as regular buses as now. Right now, we can't use any bus that's not yellow or doesn't meet the state requirements.
So we don't use any of our old activity buses?
Not for routing purposes. We still use every bus that's on our lot, but those two buses are at its getting to time to retire those two buses. And so these would be replacements for those two buses.
Okay. And then my final question. At a recent meeting, we were talking about that we bought 2,500 Chromebooks for our elementary school due to the pandemic. My understanding was with bond money.
I'm going to defer that to Mr. Kramer or Dr. Miley. I'm sorry, I can't answer that question.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for your help. When we last spoke, we were talking about the purchase of 2,500 Chromebooks for elementary school due to the pandemic. Was that something that was written in the bond that we were going to purchase those?
There's $25 million in the bond referendum for IT investments. Those include Chromebooks. That has included infrastructure.
But not specified for whom, I guess. I guess, because my concern is when we, the South Carolina School Boards Association, and my understanding was that we had planned then to get reimbursed with that through CARES Act money. But my understanding and listening to a School Boards Association webinar was that you're not permitted to do that. If you had it planned to purchase, and I'll use a different analogy, which might make more sense. For example, an addition that we're doing or heating and air change because of COVID, then you could use the COVID money for that. But for something that you'd already planned on purchasing, you can't be reimbursed.
Most of the funds were not, we were not required to. A lot of federal funds, you can't supplant, exactly what you said.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
A lot of federal funds, you can't use them to supplant your other expenditures, like you were explaining, that we're going to spend this money out of district money, and now we can't spend it with these federal funds. I mean, let me rephrase that. I'm not sure what the School Boards Association said.
It was actually the Assistant Superintendent for the state. It was sponsored by the South Carolina School Boards Association, but it wasn't the School Boards Association saying it. It was the Assistant Superintendent.
The guidelines for each of the federal funding pots of money differed. So depending on which one they were referring to, it differs in terms of the guidelines of what we can use them for. We were able to use some of those funds to buy things that we might have been planning to buy and purchase with other funds for some of the federal funds that we received. So I'm not sure exactly which ones he was referring to. But we're still on track with spending some of the CARES Act and ESRA funds on IT. And we're still planning to spend additional bond referendum funds on IT. So I'm not sure I've answered your question.
Okay. Well, that was good enough. Thanks so much. I appreciate it.
Board members, other questions or comments? And Dr. Miley, I seem to remember that question being asked before, and I think you had an answer for it. I don't remember exactly what it was, but we may want to go look at some of the footage from the last couple of meetings, because I think you answered that question, or at least a very similar question previously.
All right. I'm sorry, and I was talking to Tom as I walked off.
I said, I think you answered that question previously at a meeting. I don't remember the exact details, but I remember you answered it in a way that seemed satisfactory. And so we may want to go back and review the footage from that previous meeting. Yeah, thank you. Dr. Davis?
Just as a point of clarification, I guess, of information, as we were receiving ESRA funds and CARES Act funding, as Dr. Miley was explaining, each time the funds were rolled out, there were different sets of pots of money that we could use, we could spend the money from. And we may have been told different things at different times. So without understanding specifically which pot of money the Assistant Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent for the State Department of Education may have been referencing, we don't know. But we do have to submit a budget or submit how we will spend our funds to the State Department to get approval. And as of right now, I have not received any denial of the budgets that we have submitted. Everything we've submitted thus far has been approved for our spending.
Well, I wanted to point out, and I don't think this got advertised. Certainly, the public has not seen the entire video on the bus from the hijacking, but we did see a portion of that video publicly. Of course, the board and other law enforcement seen the entirety of it. And so as that comes out and the public really views the video, one of the things I want to point out is the clarity. The bond money was used to install those cameras, or that particular camera is continuing to be used to update our cameras on buses. Case in point of the safety and security component that we talked about with the bond and how important that is, and that was already put to use.
Yes, sir. That's accurate. We, I think it was $7.5 million for transportation, which included buses, facility, minor facility improvements, and then those technologies such as cameras, some of the things we've been talking about to increase the security on our buses. And so we, yes, sir, definitely have already implemented that money to And so we are, we, yes, sir, definitely have already implemented that money to, to, to have very nice cameras on our buses.
And future state connectivity, right? I mean, I know the Sheriff's Department talked about the ability to tap live into those cameras. That's something that
We're actively working on.
Actively working towards it. The bond has allowed us to, to push towards that.
Yes, sir.
That, that, I think it's important that the public know that that's been put to use already. Not to mention all of our bulletproof glass and many other aspects that have been put in place with vestibules and things like that.
And just thank the, thank the public for allowing us to do all this.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have legislative priorities. And with Dr. Holmes not being here, we're going to refer that to Ms. Libby Roof. You're getting some extra steps today, Libby.
I need them. Okay. This will be very quick, um, because, uh, the legislature ended their regular session on Thursday, May thirteenth. And, uh, Dr. Miley has alluded, alluded to about the, the, what they are going to come back and work on is really strictly, confined to the budget. They passed what they call their signing die resolution, which, um, calls an end to the, when the general session, regular session will end and what they can possibly do between, um, the end of that regular session and the start of the next, half of that session, which will be January twenty-twenty-two. And so they will, um, address the state budget and they will also can come back to consider, um, local bills or legislation that is currently in conference committee, meaning it's passed both houses, but it's being, um, differences are being worked out. So other than that, a lot of the bills that you see on our report are basically on pause until January of twenty-twenty-two, at which time they don't have to start over in the legislative process, because this was the first of the two-year session. They'll pick off right, pick up where they left off. The biggest thing that happened in the last, uh, few days, uh, in terms of bills that we were paying attention to was Senate Bill two oh one was signed into law by the governor on May seventeenth. And this is the bill that, um, deals with, um, when the State Department of Education can implement or can declare a state of education emergency. And this is one that had discussions, um, a lot of discussion around the state superintendent's right by this law to remove, um, a board of trustees for a school district if they are, uh, the school district is declared to be in a, um, state of emergency. And it lays out when a school is in a state of emergency or when the school district. And then as, um, uh, Dr. Miley mentioned, the other big thing is of course still out there, the state budget. And we expect that some work to begin, um, possibly the week of June eighth through the tenth. They, in that signing die resolution, they, um, noted that they can work on it June eighth through the tenth, June twenty-first through the twenty-third, and then they would come back on June twenty-ninth to consider governor vetoes. And the Board of Economic Advisors met on May twentieth, but did not adjust their projections. So the, the dollar amount will just stay the same. And that's all I have for the legislative update.
Thank you very much, Libby. Uh, next, we're going to move on to, uh, eight dot seven, the policy proposal for EBCB, Safety Plans and Drills. Dr. Davis.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have Mr. Anderson, uh, who's going to present to you policy EBCB, Safety Plans and Drills. Uh, this is a new policy, um, or a policy proposal. So this is the first reading. This policy will come back before the board for approval, um, after you have consideration to review it.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Uh, this policy is an update, uh, from the School Boards Association. In your, in yellow are the changes, uh, that, that the district is recommending. Really, this policy, uh, as, as originally written focuses heavily on fire and how fire is handled. And with the help of our Director of Safety and Security, uh, Mr. Mark Claxton, who is here to help answer any questions that come up, we have put in, uh, the paragraph here, basically, that talks about other school vulnerabilities, uh, in, in, on, in all of our situations of keeping our schools safe. And then the other line items, uh, just detail a little bit of those. With that, I'll answer any questions you, you may have unless you'd like me to go any more detail.
Board members, questions, comments? Thank you very much, Will.
Thank you.
Next, we have our draft agenda items for June twenty-ninth. Dr. Davis.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, you can see before you the draft agenda items of the June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one regular scheduled board meeting. This board meeting will be conducted regularly during our regular scheduled business, um, items. Call to order, executive session will begin at five-thirty. We'll have a public session and public hearing at six o'clock. You'll see the call to order followed by our executive session, where we'll have our student appeals and student admission requests into the district's adult education program. Coming out of executive session, we will host a public hearing for our budget. That's FY twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two general fund budget. This will be followed by inspirational moments and pledge of allegiance, and then the approval of the agenda and ask for the approval of the consent agenda. This is followed by public participation, the first public participation, then followed by our voting on executive session items, which will be the student appeals and student admission requests into the district's education program. And then any other ni- items that may be discussed as needed in executive session. Follow, following that, we have new business, no action requested. And that will be the superintendent's end of the year report, followed by our policy proposals for IMG, um, service animals. Uh, we'll also have policy proposal IMG service animals in schools. We will have the agenda items for the next board meeting. The draft agenda will be presented, ask for the approval of that draft agenda. You'll see a slight change in our order of our board meetings, because we are saving, um, our new business action requested for the last part of our board meeting. The new business action requested, we have a few items that require the board's attention. The approval of policy EBCB, which was presented today by Mr. Anderson. The approval of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two general fund budget. Then we'll ask for approval of our thought, the authorization for the superintendent to apply for available state, federal found, foundation and other special funded programs, funding for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year, which is, um, customary to get the board's authorization to allow the superintendent to do that. This then will be followed by nominations, um, for board officers, beginning with the chair, the vice chair, and then following and wrapping up with the secretary of the Board of Trustees, followed by public participation, number two, board and superintendent comments, our executive session, two items if needed, voting on those items and then ask for, and in German.
Thank you. Board members, questions, comments?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I'm not sure if I can make a motion or if this is something that could just be placed on the next meeting. But I want to be able to, um, although I agree with the positive changes that CFI want to make, I disagree with the process of how it was delivered. And especially with the board members not being aware of it until receiving information from parents. So I would like to request that we put a hold on making any changes with CFI until the school year of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, to allow board members to have that discussion as well as parent information, um, meetings with the parents to share what is going on. So I don't know if I can make a motion with that or if I can just make a request that it is placed on the next school board meeting and a hold is placed on moving forward with the changes at CFI until school year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
So, um, I, I just want to, I want to make a comment to make sure.
Okay.
If we, i- if we, that would have to be a, a, a motion at best. If we do that, we are overriding, because that's an, that's an administrative issue as to how that's done. So we as a board would then be dipping below our s- traditional authority into purely administrative issues to do that.
I'm not sure, um, Mr. Chair, if that's correct, because as a board, any changes should be brought before the board and discussed if the board have any questions or concerns. And this major change was not brought before the board, was not shared. So I'm not sure if that's administrative decision that does not have to get board input. Or even if it was an FYI for the board, we didn't receive that courtesy. And I think at least to show the transparency that we have shown with so many other things that we've done in the school district and with surveys and parental input, I think at least to give the courtesy to those parents who have invested so much time over at CFI and who have been a part of that family for so long, to give them the courtesy. I'm not saying not to move forward with the new changes, because I totally agree that those changes need to be done. And I'm glad that someone is finally taking the initiative. But I think the lack of courtesy and the way it was shared with parents is just not that richland two premier way and the CFI way. So all I'm asking is to keep the plan in place, but to move that to twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year.
Dr. Davis, you had a comment on.
And Dr. Davis, maybe you can help with clarity if that is not part of the board.
I see it totally as an administrative issue, uh, and that the board authorizes superintendent to make all the administrative, this, the administrative decisions. Making the school level change on whether or not, uh, school will tran- stop looping or to begin looping has never been brought before the board for the board's approval. I do agree with Dr. Scott, as I have agreed with, um, many of the parents that I've spoken with. And the parents have stated that the district has been very transparent and, and, and in, in its efforts to communicate with parents and involve parents in discussions. They feel as if they didn't have the opportunity to do, to do that. However, um, to, to ask the board to make a motion and then vote on preventing administration or the, the, the school level, principal to make a change in, um, the function, the basic function of, of a, a program is, is, um, really stepping outside of, um, the roles of the board and dipping in, uh, down into the administrat- down into administration services. And I don't know where that then will stop, because I, I would be concerned about that, because there are a lot of decisions that are made at the school level that parents disagree with. Parents sometimes disagree with the assignment of a teacher that they have, whether it's, um, uh, in the next grade level. There are many, many things that they may disagree with that are administrative, administrative functions. But I do again concur with Dr. Scott. I, I do think the communication piece, um, is something that we need to reva- uh, evaluate and then try to give those parents an opportunity to have their voices heard as an administration. But I am asking the board to not, um, begin the process of, uh, stepping into administrative and making administrative decisions.
Ms. Ms. Mackey.
I appreciate that parents have taken the time to contact us and we've had an, an opportunity, um, to respond. As I understand, and I am a parent and have kids, and I can understand, um, a parent, a parent's point of view with regard to, to, to changes that are made without any foreset. As a parent, I've, you know, been there, done that, and I can feel that. What I do think has happened, Dr. Davis, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there is dialogue that has, that has begun and that this is something that your administration is working with, with regard to communication. Is it not something that, that you're, which is within your purview as administration, that you all actually are in the process of having communications? Are you not?
Yes. And as you, as, as all know, that, um, no matter how flat a pancake is, it has two sides. And so, uh, although we did hear from, um, our very passionate and, um, our parents today, and we appreciate their advocacy for their students, there are groups of parents or individuals who, as one parent stated, this does not impact them. Um, and so they typically will remain silent. Then there are some that it does impact them and they are in favor of the change because of, as Dr. Scott alluded to, just from a socio-emotional developmental perspective, it would seem beneficial that those students will have an opportunity to integrate and be a part of different classes and have different learning experiences with different students and build different relationships as they transition from elementary school to middle school. And so we are in the process of working with school administration to ensure that those parents get the opportunity to have some conversation, um, with their, um, uh, with the administration at that school. I think one of the requests was for the district to fas- uh, to facilitate some sort of, uh, discussion, um, for them. So we will take those things in consideration and then try to put something in place to allow them to have an opportunity to, um, be heard and then inform administration to respond to them. And as you stated, we are in the process of doing that.
That was my understanding. Thank you. And I, and I respect the, the process to be able to, to work through that at that level. Thank you, Dr. Davis. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Somebody else? Dr. Scott, I'm sorry.
I wanted to follow up on Dr. Um, Davis' comment. I know earlier you mentioned that choice is still open. So these parents who may not be happy with the new changes at CFI, they still have an opportunity to apply for choice?
Yes, ma'am. Choice two is open until May thirty-first. Choice two is open to May thirty-first. However, that, you know, they're not here, so I'm not here to able to counsel them, but if they choose to choice out, then they, then they lose the opportunity for looping altogether, because every elementary school in our district doesn't necessarily practice the looping, the, the looping methodology, um, that is used at CFI. So we want to try to help them with the communication piece, which again, I, I will state on the record, I think that's something that we, we're gonna, we're gonna work to ensure that we rest, re, um, uh, reestablish the expectations of what communication, particularly along that program and the system and those efforts.
Mr. Chair.
Da- Ms. Agostini.
Oh, um, thank you. Um, first of all, in terms of reading, um, policy BBA, Board Powers and Duties, under reviewing action, the board has final authority within the law for the ord- for the operation of schools. No section of these policies and procedures may be construed to limit the statutory powers of the board to exercise its own judgment on the basis of the recommendations of the superintendent. But I concur with Dr. Scott in the sense, I agree that the approach, what they want to do is in the best interest of all the students. To me, it's the timing and, um, I would like to see it delayed for one year. Just so that these families, even though choice two is open, a lot of options are still not available to those families, should they wish to look someplace else. Thank you.
Yeah. So I, I, I'll make the comment, if that's what we want to see as a board, we as a board can certainly, um, take whatever authority we feel is necessary. I would encourage us, though, as has been stated many times, that administration is ultimately responsible for the academic success of our students. And if this is a, this is a slippery slope, but if it's the will of the board, um, administration has no choice but to listen if it's the will of the board. So if you want to put forward a motion to do that, um, we'll follow the process and see where it goes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion that we delay the implementation, implementation of CFI until twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year.
Motion's.
Just point, point of information, I'm sorry to interrupt. Right now, we have a motion on the floor for, I think we, we're doing the agenda, correct?
Well, she's asking for an agenda item to.
No, so she's asking for a motion.
To actually do something. You're correct.
Action.
So it would have to be, you're correct. It would need to be a motion to put that on the agenda, not a motion to actually carry that out.
Okay. I stand corrected. I would like to make a motion that we add CFI to the next agenda for voting to delay the process implementation until twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
So you're asking for an action item? It's, yeah, I, I think if, if I can just repeat it and Dr. Scott make sure I'm correct, you want a action item that would, um, allow us to vote to delay the change for CFI to the, the following school year.
Twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, I believe.
Twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
That's next year. That's what they're planning to do.
That's, okay. My apologies. Twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three.
Okay. Go, can you write that down, read it back to us and let's make sure we get that right?
I'm asking to make a motion to have CFI be delayed with their changes into school year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay. We can't make the motion that way, because that's an, that's an actual change. You're asking for an agenda item for us to vote on the delay of the opening of CFI for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Because this is about an agenda item to do that, not the actual motion to make that change.
So, once again, I would like to make a motion that we add to the agenda item to vote to have CFI delayed until twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
Okay. I, Zalene, I think I'm clear on it. If the rest of the board is, I'll get with you on the language. I said, I, I think I'm clear on it. So if the rest of the board is okay with voting. I said, I I think I'm clear on it, so if the rest of the board is okay with voting on it as it is, I'll get with you on the written part later, if that's okay. Yeah. Because we'll we'll take a hand vote on that, so.
You need a second.
I understand, I just want to make sure that the board is clear on what's being asked before I. Ms. McFadden, did you have a question on the actual motion itself? I I need to have a second for discussion, but if you if you need clarity on the motion, let me know that.
I don't need clarity on the motion.
Okay, then we, I need a second before we have discussion on it.
Second.
Second by Ms. Agostini, now it's open for discussion.
Okay, so is there any way that we can figure out why they're doing it? I mean, I think it's a good idea, when I read the emails, I think it's a good, a great idea. But maybe as to what the goal is or what the objective is of why they decided to do it and so quickly. Um, like I said, I didn't get any email, I mean, I didn't know anything about it either. You know, until we got an onslaught of emails and I started reading, tried to figure out why, so if someone could just come up and say, you know, before the next vote. And say, well, this is what we're doing, this is our plan, this is the reason why we decided to do this. Unfortunately, parents weren't notified or what have you, that would be great just so that we would know and the community would know. Now, another question is, is this a school where students would have the ability to choose to come to this school like a choice magnet school as well? Or is this one that is closed for magnets?
This, this is a, well, this is a choice school, um, it is lottery based. This is a school who has historically operated a little differently from other schools in our district. And so, um, I'm, I'm a little awestruck. In what we are proposing for CFI, because there are a lot of things that happen at CFI that is a little bit different. And as the parents stated, they kind of have their own culture and their own kind of way of doing things that was, has been long established twenty plus years ago. That has kind of given them the ability and the expectations to operate outside of some of the normal practices and procedures that the school district. implements at other elementary schools. That's been widely accepted and is one of the really um, um. Uh, I guess drawing points for many of the families that why they go to CFI. Um, so um, as far as, you know, as far as that's concerned. Um, I I believe this is done for the beneficial of 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 social engagement. What is happening with many of these students is that they're looping, they are changing teachers. Um, every two years. But what they're not doing is getting new classmates. So a group of students can stay in one class from kindergarten to fifth grade. And never get any new classmates unless someone moves in and is assigned to that class. And what they're finding is that those students are not necessarily thriving or they're having some adjustment issues. As they get to middle school and now they have new teachers. Um, six or seven new teachers plus classrooms full of students. Question I would ask us is, if we all agree that's the right thing to do, why are we prolonging the right thing? I I've I've not made, if it, if we all agree, we can all agree that maybe the communication piece was not wa- right. But we also agree that the means justify the ends. And so if it's the right thing to do and was best for kids, why are we, why would we consider prolonging that and then also. Damaging the clear divisions of administration and policymaking. Because as it stated by Ms. Ag- as as one of our board members stated, you're absolutely right, the board has the final authority, but the board delegates. The administrative responsibility to the superintendent. And that's also covered in policy BBA po- board powers and duties. Under the executive section. That the board when employ superintendent to service the chief executive officer in that role, the superintendent performs. Administrative duties for the board by virtue of the powers delegated to him or her. Those powers have been delegated to the superintendent, which is down delegated, which oversees all the administration of the board. The board is asking that they now vote on it, put an item on the agenda to vote on an administrative function. And the board does have the prerogative to do that, but that is something that could could further um. Push us down a very, very slippery slope on the clear definitions of the responsibilities of the board member. And administration, which is part of the ethics um, obligation of a board member to understand that.
Dr. Scott, I need to get Ms. Mackey before I get you again, Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me the chance for recognizing me to to speak. Um, as I have heard parents talk, I'm I'm not in favor of tying the schools' hands and administering how they administer. Their schools, as I understood it, there are parents who are in favor of this, there are parents who are not. What I did understand universally from the emails and phone calls I've gotten is that they want to understand. Uh, why their, why the rationale is there, as I understand it, there have been some mechanisms that have been put in place. For them to have a dialogue and a communication so they can work through the issues of their own school as they historically have done. I am not in the business of tying the parents' hands in that regard or tying the school administration's hands in that regard. They have asked for an opportunity to have communication and a meaningful dialogue. As I understand it, that is not taking place, I and and we, I get emails from other schools and other. Parents about, you know, issues with um, the way the school is run or an administrative issue and if we get into the business. Of overriding um. School administration and parent dialogue at the school level each time we get, you know, a group of concerned. Um, constituents, parents, community members, then that's a slippery, where does it stop? Um, the culture of CFI, as Dr. Davis has explained, is one of open communication. And they they dial, they dialogue and interface and that's why I think there were some concerns. So I think if they are allowed the opportunity to have that dialogue and discuss how their administration, how they administer. Um, the mechanisms and the of their school, then I'm not in favor of tying the parents' hands. Or the administration's hands in that regard, but allowing them the opportunity for communication at their school.
Dr. Uh, Caution Parker and then Ms. Scott, Dr. Scott.
Um, I just want to say that if the administration is looking into it, and I know you are, I know you are. I think that we need to step back and let them handle it. They have not gotten to the end of this yet. We don't know everything yet and for us to step out, because we have a group of parents here this evening who are very nice. And presented themselves very well, we need to stay out of the weeds. We need to stay out of the weeds, let the administration handle it as they are supposed to and they will let us know exactly what has happened. And then if we feel that another step needs to be taken, then, you know, that's something we all need to vote on. And we all need to agree upon, but 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 right now for us to to jump into something that's, they're smack in the middle of going through it. You know, trying to figure out exactly what happened, which we all know is a lack of communication. Correct communication, we need to stay out of it.
Dr. Scott.
Yes, I I want to say, Dr. Davis, thank you for that. And Dr. Victory presented an awesome presentation today when she talked about the social and emotional. Wellbeing of these students and the mental health. When I think about that and the environment that CFI has had for so many decades and we all agreed on that. Why would we allow these students to go through that after being out of school for almost a year and a half? To have them to go back when they return back to school face to face with all these changes? I think I stated earlier, I totally agree with the changes. I don't agree with the timing, I don't agree with the lack of communication, I don't agree that parental involvement was not there. And I thank God for the weeds, I don't know about some of you guys, but weeds let me know that there's a problem. Even when I'm doing yard work occasionally, I like weeds, so I'm not going to stay out of the weeds. And anytime I see weeds, that's going to be a red flag that something is going on and that I need to get involved, thank you.
Uh, I would just say that the prolonging it only now adds another set of students who have, who have looped. So, at some point you have to make the decision to, that's what leadership is, making the tough decisions. It's not always the decision that everybody wants or supports. But you got to have the courage to make the tough decisions and understand that people are not, everyone's not going to be happy with that decision. Pushing the can down the road and prolonging it, if this is, if we all can agree is the right thing to do. Then that's the right thing to do, there's always, the time to do the right thing is right now. And so she, as well as what Dr. Victory was saying earlier. Uh, or what we all know, I shouldn't put that on Dr. But what we all know is there are also students who are, who may be in classrooms. With students that feel isolated because they have no friends. And they stay in that classroom for two and three years. There may be students in classrooms who feel bullied, there may be students in classrooms where the vast majority of those students are performing at a particular level where one teacher may have. A group of students that are performing at a, at another level, which puts an additional strain on the teacher, we have not as a board. Even talked to the staff and gotten any information. Now, the superintendent has been beat up for not having enough information and then the board is now asking. To make a motion to do something that's administrative. Which is clear, a clear crossing of the lines, whether we're in the weeds or not, it's a clear crossing, this is an administrative decision. Not a policy decision, not a judicial decision, but an administrative decision. And I am just cautioning the board that this is a very slippery slope, that the board starts taking the authority away from the superintendent to be the CEO of a school district. I have to ask, I have to respectfully push back on that. Because that then leads us to, to lead us down the road where any individual board member, individual board then decides they're running the schools. And it puts the board and the superintendent in direct competition for running the schools. They can only, and and that cannot be the case in our district, we cannot start going down that slope. Where that road where other others may have gone, that has not been the tradition of our school district. It has been a very clear and respectful division, we don't have to agree, but we can respect the roles and the positions of the board members and of administration. And if we do this, we're saying we're the administration as this, as this, as the school board, not, not the superintendent and his team and his principal. And you have to understand the messages you were, you would send. You worry about parents to our, to our teachers and our administrators, they will then completely circumvent. The process and the procedures that are in policy and come directly to the board to make all the decisions and at that point you don't need a superintendent or principals.
Ms. McFadden.
Okay, so I was going to say, and I completely understand what you're saying, Dr. Davidson, I understand that. And so I'm trying to get a wrap around the school. For instance, you're saying it's a magnet school and the parents have chose this school because it is a type of looping school. Where their kids are in there, so they've specifically chosen this school for that type of program. And I'm wondering, and then just help me clarify because I'm new at this. For instance, my kids were in law at um, at um, hand, uh, excuse me, at um, Yale Wright. I chose that for them because that's where I wanted them to go, I wanted my daughter to be in law. If they decide that they're going to shift the law program, it's going to be different. It's not going to be them, you know, the eighth grade on this hall, the seventh grade in this hall. They're going to intermingle with the IB program, that kind of thing. Is that the type of situation that we're talking about has happened where it's been such a drastic shift? I'm just trying to clarify the type of what we're talking about. And I'm not saying I want to vote or anything like that, I just want to get clarity on, is this a shift in the program that is being enacted? Or is this just an adjustment to the classroom?
The looping is not necessarily a part of the program, it's been part of the procedure, CFI is a inquiry based educational experience for our students over there. Um, we have CFK, which is a very more knowledge central base for our students, we have, but that CFI is more inquiry, is more inquiry based. And so the curriculum and the exposure that the students are getting in the classrooms, none of that is changing, the expectations, the culture. Of that, the only thing that has happened here is that those students have traditionally been allowed to stay with the same cohort of students for five years. So they come in as kindergartners and they stay together until they leave in the fifth grade. And and for some parents, they like that and I and I and I, we've listened to a few tonight. Who've expressed that and there were many probably that was listening, a few online that were listening as well. For many parents at the school, this doesn't impact them because they are first or second year students. Um, so they're kindergartners or first graders. This is more for the group that may be in third or fourth grade or fourth and fourth grade because the fifth graders are on the way out. The staff, along with the administration, according to the information that we received. Has been discussing that this is not beneficial for the students, so obviously they have seen something in the, or seen the need to make this change. But apparently that was poorly communicated that they were ready to make that change. They may have looked at this opportunity of COVID and not having fully cla- classrooms full to say, if we're going to make this change now. We're going to make this change because I can tell you this, regardless if this change was made in January. Or this change is made next year, we're still going to have to have this discussion. And there's still going to be people who are going to be concerned and don't want the change to happen. So to push, to avoid the having to make the difficult decision doesn't make the difficult decision go away. I've learned that more than anything this year, super and superintendent. That you're just going to have to make the difficult decision and 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 that's what it's going to be. So that's what the administration has has made, I think as as many have said tonight, along with our board members and our parents. There is a, there was a issue with the communication of this. There was definitely an issue with the communication, none of us can avoid that and we need to address that as an administration. We need to give the parents the opportunity to have their questions asked, to be able to have the dialogue that they're suggesting. And a few did suggest to prolong it, but then once you've again prolonged it, then the next group is probably going to say the same thing. Well, now that I've already been with my class for three years, I don't want you to prolong it now. Because now I've been in with my students, my kindergarten, first and second grade for three years now, so don't pro, don't change it now. So at some point you got to make, we're going to have to make the change. And I think that they're using the COVID, um, and the fact that we didn't have kids in class, they wasn't with that group of students for a particular long periods of time. We didn't come back face to face until November. And CFI was one of those schools where there was a lot of students who returned face to face, but many of them have not been together. In a classroom from March of twenty nineteen, or March from twenty twenty to November twenty twenty-one. And I believe the administration felt that this was the time, because we weren't together, to go ahead and make this, this significant change. Along with those teachers, other teachers at this, at this school, now they again have had. A lot of different kind of, their cultures a little bit different and we have celebrated that um, in the past. Um, but now that there's a disagreement with it, it's now we want the board to intervene and make a decision. Uh, in the past, it's, we want you to stay out of what's going on over here, over here.
I, Dr. Davis, I'd like to say, I mean, our TLC, this this happened with TLC several years ago, they made a change, it was very poorly communicated. We had a huge outcry from parents, that change went forward. As those students who were initially in the program and trickled it out, we began to hear less and less of the issues that were originally brought up, I think the program. Components of it matured. Parents got used to the new way, I. I, I'll be honest, I I think that this request is a way to undermine the board, undermine the superintendent. Um, I think it is a initial pass at um, trying to run our superintendent off. By the board starting to get into the weeds, there are hundreds and thousands of decisions like this to get made in the district every day. That we don't hear about and we did hear from these parents today, we've had a few emails from parents. On a percentage basis of the school, I would say it's a small percentage of parents even in that school. Um, there's lots of tough decisions, we hold the superintendent. Accountable for academic progress, we, there's a new law that we can be removed from our positions. If there is enough poor performance in the district and if we're going to start digging under administration to make these decisions. Then again, I think it's a path forward to undermine the credibility and the effectiveness of this board. And frankly, I think it's a beginning effort to run off Dr. Davis, I mean, I, if we start doing this. I'm sure he has a lot of opportunities in other places and these are the types of things that will run him and or other key staff who are premier in this district. I strongly recommend that this board not move forward with this recommendation and that we not move forward on this path, I I truly believe. Um, that that there are other, other things at play that we don't understand as to why this was brought up. Um, if there's no other discussion, we need to take the vote. All in favor of the motion? Raise your hand. Well, we have a motion and a second, I can't.
This is just to put it on the agenda, we're not making the decision, it's just to get it on the agenda.
So mo- to to approve putting this on the agenda for a vote, raise your right hand again, raise it high. All opposed? Motion, any abstaining? It's a tie, it fails. Sir? Sir, no, we had, oh, it was, you're right. It was three, two within abstention. So I'm sorry, three, two within abstention. It fails. Are any other items we'd like to see added to this agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I don't want anything added, but I'm just a a request as we talked about board retreats and budget workshops and different workshops. Can we get a calendar of the expectation of meetings this summer?
Yes, yeah, we're uh, we're working on that calendar now. Um, I think, Zaleen, did you get all the results back from board members as to the new retreat date? Okay, July, so we will, we'll make sure the board calendar gets updated and all that gets out. I'm sorry, we had a request, the South Carolina uh, School Board Association Black Caucus had a meeting um, on that same day that we had originally planned it and asked us to please cooperate and move that. So I had a deference for that group and our relationship with some of the folks that are on that board. I um, acquiesced that we would move it. So just so you understand why that happened. I'm sorry, I got two people.
I'm sorry, what group did you say?
The South Carolina School Boards Association Black Caucus.
They have an event that day?
They're having a meeting that day. Yes. But Ms. Agostini?
Yeah, do we have any budget workshops or anything else? Our next board meeting is July twenty ninth and then we have.
We do have a budget workshop, so I I will get those dates out to you ASAP.
It's June seventeenth.
June seventeenth. It's already been on the calendar, right? Yes.
Well, we we've got different days coming and going, so I would just like a final calendar.
All right, we'll get you a final calendar.
Thank you.
We, I'm sorry, Dr. Caution Parker. Wait, I'll I'll get you an updated calendar. We'll get that out to everybody. We'll make that a priority. Okay, uh, with no further ado, we will move on then to approval of the draft agenda um, as originally presented, all in fa- uh, all, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the draft agenda items for the June twenty ninth, two thousand twenty one school board meeting.
Motion was made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, raise it high. All opposed? Motion passes five, one. All right, next we have our public participation number two. There's no one signed up. We'll now move on to board and superintendent comments. Dr. Scott.
Would like to say thank you to everyone that presented this evening. Although I have questions, I want to thank you for your consideration of being able to address my questions or to get back with me at a later time with answers to my question. I often like to remind people, um, you know that I was raised by my grandmother and my grandmother always showed tough love. One thing that she often would say to me is, it doesn't matter where you're from, it doesn't matter what your zip code is. But what matters is how you treat people. Don't ever get so high and forget that you will come back down and you will see those same people. I say that to say, many of my colleagues and even former colleagues prior to getting on this board, would sit out where the staff is sitting now and would send me emails, telephone calls, and even text messages to say, thank you for asking questions. Thank you for being an advocate. Thank you for addressing that. And then once elected to the board, zip lips. One thing that I will say is I've never been afraid to stand up for what I believe in. I've never and will never be afraid to fight for the voiceless, to fight for those who are too afraid to fight for themselves. Because I know where I've come from. I was born and raised in Bethel Bishop and off a fair road. I started my career as a teacher assistant, became a teacher, assistant principal, principal, educational consultant, national trainer, and now serve on the school board. I have humble beginnings. I know where I came from and I will never forget that. So I want to say to my teachers, to my parents, and to the community, you can count on me to be a voice for you, even if I have to be the only voice standing and fighting for you. I will continue to do that because I will continue to treat people the way I want to be treated, regardless of how much or how little I have achieved in my life. And I will go back to make one more comment. For everyone who's ever worked anywhere, whether it's in Richland School District Two or anywhere else, you want someone who will be that voice and that vote when you feel like injustice has not been on your side. You can count on me to be that person. And if you have a problem with that, that's your problem, not mine. Because when it's your turn to be standing before someone who says to you after you've worked so hard and dedicated so much time to say, you're not worthy of us to hear from you, you'll wish you had Dr. Monica Scott on your side. Thank you and have a good evening.
Dr. Caution Parker.
Um, I'd like to say congratulations um, on the award of recognition recipients named this evening in the superintendent's highlights. Um, I've I've always appreciated that. I really am glad you you do that. It it makes a big difference. It adds, again, like I said last time, a positive note to our board meetings instead of anything negative. Um, the other hand, I'd like to say thank you to all the um, presentations this evening. It was a lot of information, a lot of work, a lot of time that you take to do that. And um, just let, I just want you to know that I, Cheryl, appreciate it. And everyone have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to uh, also congratulate all of those who were recognized tonight, especially all of our Richland Two um, track and field athletes who podiumed at state meet last week. And a special thank you to all of our um, to all those that participated in public participation. It was nice to put faces with emails and I appreciate the passion, interest, and advocacy um, these constituents, these parents are having for their students and for um, those in the schools and the families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden.
Again, I just want to say thank you to the staff and the presentations. And uh, Dr. Vicky and Mr. Anderson, I do apologize for my phone going off. I have kids and sometimes they forget I'm doing other things. So I apologize for that. Um, but I will say that, you know, um, I enjoy our board meetings. They do get hyper at times. And, you know, we do go back and forth and sometimes, you know, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding things correctly um, before I take a vote or what have you. Um, but I just want to thank y'all for your patience and for explaining things to me. And sometimes I may have a, you know, a little bit more questions or whatnot, but I want to be sure, you know, of what I'm voting for and what I'm trying to say. And I don't want to go down a slippery path of where we're undermining our superintendent because I feel like Dr. Davis does a great job. Matter of fact, a couple of years back, um, um, when I was on the CRC, we nominated him for an award uh, for serving for Richland School District Two because we knew that he was doing great things. So I don't even want to undermine what he's doing. I just want to make sure that for this particular situation with CFI that we're servicing the parents, um, especially if it's a magnet school. And I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing by our administration. Um, so you guys know a lot more than I do, so I know I don't have accolades anywhere near what Dr. Scott um, read on her list. I don't have all that, but I am saying that I'm interested in, you know, finding out more of what I can find out before we make a decision. And so when we call for votes, I want a little bit of time to to go through it. So I thank y'all for your patience and I thank y'all for your information. And everybody have a good night.
Yes, Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I've spoken to everyone's, everyone who presented tonight. I do want to thank um, Kristen Eubanks for her presentation. Um, when I talked to her a couple of weeks ago, um, she didn't know what she was going to say at that time. And she took the time to go and talk to members of her staff at the school and to corral teacher, I mean, to corral students and teachers and staff members um, to talk about what inspires them. That's just so meaningful. So I want to thank her for her time and the extra effort it took to do that. Um, and focusing on every child, every chance, every day, that is why we are here. She talked about who inspires you and who do you inspire, and Dr. Davis and and your staff and our teachers, our principals, our parents. Um, thank you for all that you bring to the table. Um, it and it's, delivery is everything. If you have a T-bone steak, porterhouse, whatever big, huge piece of meat or tofu it is that you want and someone delivers it to you on a platter, a plate, a paper plate, a napkin, it's desirable. If it's delivered to you on the garbage can lid, you are not interested in receiving it. So thank you, Dr. Davis, for your professionalism, um, for your courage under fire, for your candor, for your staff who stands here and remains professional no matter what's being hurled at them, who maintains their kindness, who maintains the steak that they are delivering us on a platter and not a garbage can lid, even when that's not always what they're receiving. So I just thank you for what you do and I thank our teachers and our parents. And please know um, that your hearts are not um, forgotten. Bless you. You all have a good evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I will first off, I was just again thanking my team for their wonderful work, um, for making sure that we're prepared for these board meetings um, and that we present the information and conduct the business of the board uh, in the public. Um, and that we understand that that's what we are here to do, is to conduct the business of the board in the public. Thank you to my tech team and all the work that they do um, to ensure that we are able to broadcast this information out to our communities as well. And congratulations to all those individuals that I listed in the superintendent's highlights. And if I just had a a quick second, I'll I'll just say, I visited three schools today. Um, well, four schools today, and I try to make sure that I get out and visit schools, more important, more importantly, visit classrooms to to check on the children, to make sure that all the children are well. I had, I had great school visits today as superintendent. And the reason why, first school that I visited today, I s- I saw some students at Forest Lake and um, a young lady asked me if I still had the sticker that she gave me on the day that I helped them or I met with them after the bus incident. And I showed her that I still had the sticker. A classmate asked her, who is that? Um, or how do you know him? And her response was, he helped me. That that meant a lot to me. Uh, I visited another school today and a student talked about the the word collector, which was a book that I usually read when I read to our students. And the students told me about the fact that they have taken that to heart and they work to learn a new word every day. So increasing some students vocabulary and to focus on their, on their vocabulary. And in my last visit of a school today, I had a student stand and recite a Langston Hughes poem because I read a Langston Hughes poem to those students. And so was so impressed by the fact that this young lady had committed a Langston Hughes poem in elementary school to memory because of a poem that I read to them during um, uh, doing a reading, uh, a reading activity that we had in the district. And that reminded me of why I do what I do, why we do what we do. And many of the things that we covered tonight have little to do with those things. And it it put the emphasis on, and I needed to do that before tonight's board meeting because I needed to be focused on the work. Because that's where the heart, that's where the thing comes in and is to focus on the work. So I appreciate um, those students for reminding me um, all of the students. Uh, because every school is important to us. And I want to remind our parents of CFI. Um, I know I said some things this afternoon or this evening. I, we hear you, we're listening, and we're gonna work on reestablishing the the communication, the lines of communication and trust for the community that you, or the schools that you support. But you also have to understand that we have thirty nine other schools that are watching and thirty nine other sets of parents that are watching to see what we do. And when we start showing preferential treatment or adjusting things for one set of parents versus the entire school district, we're setting a precedent that is gonna be very difficult to come back from. And the students at at those elementary schools who may not be in magnet programs, who may not be at the top of the top when it comes to academic performance are just as valuable and those parents are just as valuable as any set of parents in our community. And that's not to say that the C F parent, CFI parents say that they're not. I'm just saying that from a leadership position, you always have to take those things in consideration when you are advocating. And uh, when people are advocating, you always have to take those things into consideration. Leading is hard. Let's get used to it.
Yeah, I don't know. I I have so many things going through my mind. I I don't even know where to go with this. I mean, I, you know, I I I feel for our staff and our parents who watch this fighting between board members tonight. And um, honestly, I'm I'm struggling. I think one of, a a hard part for me in leadership is uh, emotional intelligence and being able to squash those feelings that come up when you feel attacked or or put in a a hard spot. But ultimately, it's not about me. It's, it shouldn't be about any one of us as individuals up here, how many votes we got, or what position we hold, or any of that. It should be just as Dr. Davis said, that little girl that wants to feel safe in her school, the kids that want to learn. Um, we saw on the the videos today um, how excited those students are to learn and to grow and develop and their, the opportunities that prevents for their, presents for their future. And, you know, I it it just, it it makes me feel sad when this is how we conduct ourselves. And it's a struggle. I I'm not gonna abdicate any of my responsibility in all of this. But um, but again, it it really, it shouldn't be about any of us as individuals. It should be, and and we, and leadership is hard, as Dr. Davis said. Every decision you make, somebody's on the wrong end of that decision, always. And i- if, you know, first day, they teach you to stop the bleeding. They don't teach you to slow it down. Because if you just slow it down and and you don't stop it, then all all you're doing, they can still bleed out, right? I mean, you you have to make those hard decisions. And sometimes that might be amputating a leg to save the body. And those are decisions that Dr. Davis and his team get faced with on a regular basis. And does he feel any less worse for amputating somebody's leg in that proverbial case? Not. But you gotta make those decisions. I I appreciate y'all. I hope that we can um, have a a better meeting next time with more civil discourse, um, and that we can remember that it's it's not about us, the number of votes we have, position we hold, title, whatever it may be. Um, but it's about trying to to with civility, conduct the business of the district so that we can create the environment that the staff, students, parents, and the community needs to thrive and and do well. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Motion made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. All in favor, raise your right hand high. And it's unanimous. We're now adjourned.